Board of County Commissioners now in session for this Redfern meeting, the twentieth of September, two thousand and twenty-two. It's good to see you all this morning.
Recording in progress.
We're going to get started. Commissioner Bolt, would you lead us in prayer and pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity today to work with people. We thank you for your influence by law. And we thank you for your blessings and your grace of our life. Your Lord, as we continue this today, let us repeat your will in our life, not in your grave. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my two flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Our first action on this morning is approval of minutes.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lockley to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Next will be payment of the county bills.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Mr. Rowan, Ms. Tracy Busby, management experts about the brick grant application.
Actually, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Erin will bring up the issue with Tracy later on during her report. There was an issue that we, this morning, on Tracy's, well, on our end with Tracy, so we'll just defer that to Erin's report, sir.
Okay.
It is pretty much just going to be a notice of intent for the brick grant application, Commissioner. Yeah, so we'll cover that over.
Okay, so we're just not going to hear from Ms. Busby this morning?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Okay, up next will be public comments.
Oh, and there's one to remove, one from the butler queue. She has to be removed.
Okay, so Crimson Tide Services, Al Stone, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes, sir.
My name is Al Stone. I represent Crimson Tide Services. We solve problems. I represent Ms. Melissa Chandler Bloodworth at one oh nine Bay City Road. And what I'd like to talk to you about is three things today in the three minutes. There used to be a ditch. There should be a ditch, and the question I want you to answer, maybe not today, is there going to be a ditch? This is Ms. Chandler's property that I was going to put a French drain on. The tragic part about her property that's flooded even now as we speak, it's also, and no offense to Ms. Chandler, but that's septic water out of her septic tank flooding her neighbors. So basically, her poop is going over the entire neighborhood. So for those who haven't driven by, and many have driven by and seen it.
Sir, if you would, please address it forward, thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize. I just, and I didn't bring witnesses here, I just brought pictures. So these are just pictures. There is a question that there used to be a ditch. Some of the people on the other side said there never was a ditch, and as I've said to those people in a recorded conversation, this concrete proves that there used to be a ditch on Bluff Road because that concrete shows that ditch used to be there. And if ditch was maintained to the bottom of that, there would not be that water on that property. Besides the environmental health of what's being spread over the neighborhood is that. That's electrocution. That's going to kill somebody. That's a subtransformer underwater. It's been underwater for almost two weeks. The question is, did there used to be a ditch? Should there be a ditch? And is there going to be a ditch? I've talked with Virginia, I've talked with Howard, I've talked with Mitch. My mom would be proud I've actually become friends with Rhett Butler. I can't believe I get to know him. I've talked with Ted's employees at the airport. Ms. Erin has even done our county a great service by getting four and a half million dollar grant to help stop water problems. I've talked with Mark. I've talked to Mr. Jimmy, who used to sit where you sit, who owns property that's affected by this. I've talked to Randy Smith, who works for White Constructions, whose property is affected by this. So the question is, there used to be a ditch, should be a ditch, is there going to be a ditch? We have some options. We don't have to get into the fiber optic war with consolidated, who believes and who have stated clearly, and also, I left these out. Section fourteen, section five of our own county code, which simply states, surface drainage system must serve adjacent areas and manage and will not cause damage or create stagnant ponds or other nuisance. That's our own county ULDC. And the federal state water management system, which just happens to be in Tallahassee, and the federal, it's also has to be in Tallahassee, and the emergency flood management people of Florida, and even the own contractor of Snell Grove out of Marianna, who the county has hired to do the survey, all of which seem to agree that there used to be a ditch, there should be a ditch. Your question is, is whether there's going to be a ditch. I've got four different options in conversation with others.
We can have that conversation. We just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, the buck comes up.
Yeah, sir. Well, I would ask you, if you could, if you have time, could you possibly wait until our road superintendent comes up in a couple of minutes?
I would love to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Michelle Maxwell, clerk of court.
Good morning, Michelle Maxwell, clerk of court. I am requesting the board to schedule a special meeting on September the thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two to close out the end of the year and pay county bills. So we just need to have that special meeting on September, September the thirtieth. So we can, you know, just finish out paying all the county bills for the end of the year, because that is our end of the year, whatever you propose.
We use it at nine o'clock?
Okay, it sounds as a regular commission time. Well, that way you have time during that day to finish, is why I'm asking.
Yes, I would think so. I think last year, that's, we had it at nine o'clock. Yeah, that would work.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion, commissioners? So we're, if we're, with a positive vote, we are having that meeting on the thirtieth at nine o'clock here in the commission chambers. All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, ma'am?
Just real quick, I just wanted to give you just a little update on the records that's being scanned by COVOL. We already have the first phase back, waiting on the second phase, looking at maybe next month to getting the records back. So hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have all of the records back. Everything will be scanned, all of the official records to, from eighteen thirty-two to present. So, and I'll do a presentation whenever it's completed to kind of, you know, show you guys how it works on my website, the link that is available, and all of the records will be available online.
Okay.
So just wanted to give you the update.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and I'm sure we all do. A quick question, though. Didn't, in a previous discussion, didn't you say that there were some special documents from Dr. John Gore that also included in this presentation?
Yes, I had that entire book preserved, and so I'm going to bring that to the next, well, not the next meeting, but whenever I get it back, and in the presentation, I'll show that as well.
Thank you.
Eighteen thirty-two, sir.
That's, that's a little while.
It's a huge accomplishment. I'm very proud of that.
Mr. Neighbors, Howard Neighbors, superintendent of roads and bridges, you're up next, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
I don't know where to start at. I got three or four items I'd want to go over, which, one is we have a lot of rain, I mean, a lot. I think ten, twelve inches just in Appalachia the past weekend, the weekend before last. Uh, which we still grading road, we're way behind on the roads and all, kind of all the rain, but we've been grading roads and, uh, still cutting grass and doing ditches and trying to solve drainage problems, uh, which he was talking about, which the water is landlocked there. But I've been out here a long time. I lived in Franklin County a long time, and I don't, never remember a ditch being in that area. There is a pipe under that road. When they paved that road, they did put a pipe there, but I don't remember a ditch ever being there. So, uh, me and Commissioner Perez has looked at it, me and Mitch has looked at it, trying to figure out a way to get that water out of there. But any way you go, even on Bluff Road, which you got all fiber stuff, which we called a phone company and all, and they marked it all, and there's all kind of wire, water lines, and all kind of stuff that goes through there. So, and also, I think you got a substation before you get to that ditch, you want to try to drain that water to. Uh, then the other option, which he was talking about, you had to cut that Bluff Road in two, which I don't think we need to do that, but, or you could try to drain it to Bay City. If you could dig a small ditch on the backside of that property, and what it is, side Bluff Road and her house is a big pond right there. So all that water cells there, that pond gets full and just floods her. So, uh, but that was that. And I got, let me see, Mr. Turner, School Road. Uh, he said he talked to somebody at the road department and all, and he did, the last person he talked to was Lamar about that ditch that he's wanting to keep cut. I've talked to D. Witt about it, and D. Witt and him did cut it, I think, last year, which is the first time they've ever cut it. But I will get up with him this week and see what we could do to help him. But I know he's saying he want to fill it in and fill that ditch in, but if he does that, it's going to flood all the people from Avenue A and School Road. So, because all that water runs through, build us through his property, then goes under ninety-eight.
So who's, who's wanting to, what property you saying they want to fill in?
That's Mr. Turner on ninety-eight and School Road. So I think he's got up with Michael, Ron, and also Mr. Schuler.
So is it some of our drainage stuff he's trying to fill in?
Yeah, he said he was going to fill it in or wanting to fill it in, so we didn't keep it maintained.
Is, is it currently being used? What, if he does fill it in, where's the water going to drain to?
It's going to run across the highway and cross ninety-eight there probably, because all that's downhill. But, but I'm going to talk to him, and I don't think he's going to fill it in, so.
No.
But he want to maintain, but we, all mosquito-controlled ditches, D. Witt and them cut for once a year.
Right.
Not every week.
Right.
Not every two weeks, and I think that's what he wanting.
Right.
Is that regular cut, so.
Okay. Please, please let us know for that chance.
I will.
Um, question?
Yes, sir.
That's a Mr. Perry ditch, but I still want to, did, did the engineer have been out there and looked at that?
Sir?
Our engineer.
Has anybody from Duber went out and looked at what this gentleman brought up this morning?
No, no, they had nobody. I mean, me and Smokey, I'm a commissioner of affairs that looked at it, but I recommended to her, she could dig a little ditch on that pond, two Bay City Road, and she wanted to know if the county can do it. And I said, no, man, we can't go on private property, but I, you know, I'd be glad to try to help you, but we can't. And either way you go, on trying to drain this water, you got to, you got to get on private property, or you got to cut driveways and concrete in two. So.
So was your question, correct?
Yeah, the, the driveways and the.
Yes, if you go northeast on, on her road, uh, you got two or three different driveways that you'd have to cut in two, to drain that water, and at that very end, I think it's private property, which that water will be running into, so really, you can't go that way. And, and you got Bluff Road, you don't want to cut Bluff Road in two, which is, you know, new paved road. And then you got the Bluff Road, which you got all these power lines and, uh, fiber and all them cables and water lines and all kind of stuff runs through there. So either way we go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you have a phone company and all them come out there and mark those lines?
I did, and they were probably five or six different wires that goes through that they had marked.
What about the sewer line that runs the breakaway lodge?
And you got sewer line, I think, and also you got water line, big water, water line that runs through there too. Yeah, both sides of the road, correct. So hey, I think he was talking something about somebody wanting to give a easement to try to go to buy a property or something, but still, then you're going to have a two-foot, three-foot ditch through there. So.
What property is that you're talking, referring to?
You go ahead. Chairman speak. I never have come before a board in twenty years in any of the seven states without bringing solutions. I have four different solutions to present to you that don't involve messing with all that fiber optic cable. I'd love the opportunity to present those to you. They do involve some negotiation with other people who own property. I've talked with all the adjacent property owners personally, face to face, not by phone, not by email, not by text, and they're in agreements of trying to solve this problem. All I'm asking for is us to have a chance to solve the problem without going down the road. So Mr. Smith, who works for White Construction, is willing to allow an easement. To me, and my recommendation to you today is to get this water as fast as we can to Mitchell Creek. Mitchell Creek's the largest drainage in the county. It drains the airport. It was dug by the Army Corps of Engineers. So the faster we, so how far away is that? Seventy-two yards. Not seventy-two miles, not seventy-two thousand yards, seventy-two yards, the largest drainage in the county. And we can get there. We can get there without involving the electrical, all those marks. We can get there. That's solution number one, and there's two different ways to get there, both of which would engage Mr. Smith's property, both of which. And he is in agreement with that. He would probably like some compensation for that, and I've even talked to Mr. Rhett about that as well yesterday.
Thank you.
Mr., I'm going to make a motion. Commissioner Perry, I'm making, um, how about, let's make a motion to get our engineer and that fellow there and come back with, with some talk. Is that all right to you?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add to your motion, Mr. Lockley, Commissioner Lockley? The whole county, let's, I mean, I've talked in the past about drainage issues all over the county and potentially moving forward, having some stormwater drainage improvements. I know we've got some going on on the island. Let's do the whole county. I mean, it's not fair just to do one area, and when all the county, in my opinion, has drainage issues. Otherwise, we'll have people keep coming back before the board when things happen in future. So.
Let's do it.
Okay.
I ain't got no problem with it. It's got to be done sooner or later.
Yeah, it's a big issue everywhere.
Do you have a minute, your second?
Okay, I, yeah, but I don't know where we going.
Okay, so.
When you say the whole county, what are we looking at? What are we doing? Where are we going?
What I'm hearing, so to be very clear. So what we've changed from is from looking for one specific incident to looking to countywide, basically, stormwater issue. So first thing I got to do is bring back a cost of the county before we could move anywhere else, because there's a cost to that, for the engineer to do that kind of comprehensive study. And then the board could decide, are you going to break it down into phases? Are you going to pay over a whole period of time? I, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing. You guys, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, we have applied for the vulnerability assessment grant, and that actually might address some of those issues, where it would be kind of a planning ground on, these are the hot spots, these are the areas that need to be looked at. However, we haven't received notification if we receive funding yet.
That, and we'll still need to offset that with actual cost that Duber is going to cost, I mean, going to charge us. So let me bring that, commissioners, if that's what you guys are asking for, let me get that cost, and then let's, let's compare it to the study, and we go from the grant, I'm sorry, and we go from there.
Mr. Chairman, but what are we going to direct the engineers to look at? The countywide drainage basin? I mean, that's an open-ended, you understand what I'm saying?
I do think that.
The vulnerability assessment is going to look at countywide, so, so that's kind of a separate issue almost. You know, that's going to be kind of more of a long-term approach. So.
So, so let me ask.
I mean, what are we going?
So let me ask, so this morning, your motion was to try to take care of this issue with the engineer and other people involved, this gentleman, potential, to try to come up with a solution for Ms. Bloodworth and her property, correct? And I know the commissioner was asking about doing a countywide approach, but we've already applied for a vulnerability assessment grant, and Michael, you and I are supposed to meet in the next week or so with somebody from Governor DeSantis' office that does vulnerability and resilience, correct?
Yeah, resilience, yes, sir. You're, you're correct. So, to tell you how the board feels about this, how about we just go. So, depending on how the board feels about this, how about we just go, we do two motions, one specifically for this issue, to have the engineer look at this, and then since we have a bigger situation, which, which will need more information, we have a separate motion for a countywide study, as it compares to the assessment, and to the grant and the funding, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, I didn't wanna delay Ms., Ms. Chandler getting relief from her issue, so yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, uh, okay, let's, let's stick with the first motion, and then have Commissioner Ward make a separate motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for that by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Parrish, you give it to that commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. To try to address this issue by itself first, and take care of that. Any other discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I ain't trying to just do this, uh, I don't want nobody to think that.
No.
But what I'm, we got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
We got to get it done, I mean, and we got some funding, might get funding, I don't know, I, I must said might, 'cause I don't never, till I see the check.
That's pretty promising.
Yeah, until I see the check, that was it.
That's what I was just, Commissioner.
But, uh, we got to start, and, and it's a good start.
Yeah.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. So you'll be bringing something back to us, Howard, between you and Michael about trying to take care of this?
I will, Commissioner, and we never had that kind of flooding ever before that I can remember. Uh, I know that water used to build up, and it would run across the road, and it would run into that creek, or ditch, or whatever he's talking about, but, uh, I think if I ain't mistaken, she owned all that property and sold it, and all that property's been built up, and people built houses through there, so, and now it's just created a big, just that everything's landlocked, so.
Well, let's see what we can do to fix it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah, I do, I, I talked to Aaron last week about some employees that, that I wanted to move around. Uh, I had little Mitch McCaplin, which has been, which is a supervisor, which I moved to supervisor a few years ago, and I would like to move him to assistant superintendent, which has always been a super, assistant superintendent till I took over. I mean, the super, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent both left at the same time, so. And I got, uh, Ronnie Dean, that I'd like to move into working foreman, which is gonna take Lamar's spot, he retired in June. And I got one more, which is Mr. Rusty Putnall, is a mechanic, which has been there twenty-two years, and as of now, he's a senior mechanic, and I'd like to move him to mechanic supervisor, to be over the shop.
Mr. Griffin, that's something, uh, I'm, I'm not trying to speak out of turn.
Okay.
But we need to, uh, probably have Evergreen weigh into that, correct?
We do, Evergreen would need to actually, uh, look at the job descriptions, and then actually, uh, place them in the pay plan, and, uh, come up with a classification as well.
So we can have something maybe in the next few meetings to try to move forward, potentially if the board so chooses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine, we'll make a motion.
So the motion we'll be looking for is to send this to Evergreen, 'cause some of these are now new, new positions that, there's no classification, no salary information, nothing in there for, so we need those added to the, uh, to the pay plan.
Some are new, and some are newer positions we've had in the past.
Yes.
But, Mr. Chairman, as you have one man retiring, that money can be used to, in other words, it's not a, a budget buster, because you got a salary now that the guy's retired, you, you sitting there with a salary already in the budget. So as Evergreen looks at this, that money can be moved over to these different classifications without ra, having to raise the budget.
That's correct.
Is that, is that the way we all see this?
That's correct, Commissioner.
But we're still in the motion, I guess, to move that forward to Evergreen.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Book?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you, did I hear you right? You don't have assistant?
No, when I, when I took over, Commissioner, about nine, ten years ago, I just moved two employees to work in foreman, and it's been that way ever since, so.
But we always, then we always have a, like a...
Yes, sir, we've always had...
You, you kind of owe, owe, owe...
Assistant superintendent and a superintendent, correct? Yes, sir. It's always, used to be that way.
Because it was, it was you and Larry, correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Well, that's already should be set up, right? Uh, assistant and...
It was not, Commissioner, because, um, there was no employee filling that position, um, so it was, I don't even believe it was submitted to Evergreen, because there, that position was not in existence at the time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Currently it in Evergreen, looking at?
Some stuff, yes.
Yes.
Round two of this?
Yes, exactly.
Pay plan, and we made a comment that this would be the last time we go into this?
We kinda wanna sneak it in there, yes, sir.
Okay.
After doing this.
We need to get all this stuff through. All right.
So it's a pleasure to work with you.
I'll make a motion to...
Make a motion not, or?
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Howard's recommendations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, a second by two, Commissioner Parrish and Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Mr. Neighbors?
Yeah, and, and his situation, y'all gonna get the engineer to look at that, and I get up with engineer, me and Michael, or?
Yes, we'll schedule a meeting, uh, yes, you, uh, I don't know who from Dewberry's gonna do this, but we'll find whichever one, yes.
And, and representatives will contact each other. And we'll be in touch with you, Mr. Stone, too, to keep you involved.
Yes.
As much as we can.
Mr. Chairman, just wanna be sure, from the bigger picture, Commissioner Ward has said, let's look at the entire drainage issue of the county. We've got a potential grant to help us look at that, just wanted to make that clear in the record that we wanna move forward in the big picture.
And I'll, I'll go and make that motion now.
Okay. I'll second it.
So, motion is that we're pursuing a grant to try to look at drainage issues across the county, just wanna make sure we're correct, okay?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Book. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I guess my question is, Ms. Erin, on that grant we finna get, the grant you getting, is it for, for a study, or is it to fix?
It, it's actually the assessment component, Mr. Noah, so it would actually look at countywide, and then it would kind of identify the hotspots, and then from there, you would actually be able to qualify for some other flood mitigation grants and different things of that nature. It's actually a requirement, um, leave through DEP, they wanted all counties to have a vulnerability assessment.
Okay.
And it just kinda gives them a logical platform for, you know, funding.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, didn't the governor sign into with his new budget, a lot of money donate, or earmarked for stormwater drainage improvements throughout the state? So, I know that we didn't get a whole lot of money in the grand scheme of things to, to cover the whole cost of fixing the drainage issues in our county, but it is a start, and we've gotta do something, um, so that people, other people like Ms. Chandler don't have these issues.
Right. Mr. Chairman, also, as, as the county grows and more homes are being built, it's less drainage going into the ground to percolate, so, 'cause you got so much coverage.
That's right.
Now, a, and also, it's not just Franklin County's got flooding problem, it's all over the country. Look at Kentucky, look at Mississippi, look at Bay County last week, when we got that rain, two days later, they got the rain, and, and if you watch TV very much on Channel thirteen or seven, you seen all the flooding issues they had. Two days later, we got the same rain, six, eight, ten inches, when all the problems happened. It's not an occasional shower, but it's not just Franklin County, it's all over this country. And it's getting worse in Franklin County as we build more homes, take up more square footage of an acre or a lot, where's this water gonna go? That compounds the issue, so, you know, it's not just, w, we can't control Mother Nature up here, and nobody else can, as you look across the country and see all the flooding going on, so, you know, it, it's not like Franklin County's sitting on their hands and not trying to alleviate flooding. As we build out more properties, flooding is gonna get worse, which is why you have so much flooding in other places across the country, especially the urban areas where there's nothing but concrete, houses, and asphalt. There's nowhere for this water to go, it's gotta go to a river, or creek, and the creek swell and floods everybody out, I mean, so, it's a complicated process that we trying to deal with, and it's not a simple process. If we don't get eight or ten inches, then she wouldn't have a flooding problem. You get two inches, it's not gonna flood her property the way it is now. When you get eight or ten inches, yes, you got issues, and it's not just her property, it's all over the county. So that's kinda where we're at, and what we're trying to deal with.
And you know what, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, e, even microscopically, in St. James' Bay, there is a holding pond at the corner of ninety-eight and Crooked River Drive, and that holding pond has, um, breached itself and begun to flood some private property there in that area. Big question is, who is in control of the holding pond? Is it the homeowners association, or is it the developer in that area? So, there are microscopic issues that go into the same point you're saying. I also note that we are looking at some, uh, flood, um, stormwater mitigation in certain, if you will, spotty areas, if we, let's look at some of the projects we're doing in St. George Island right now. We're also looking at mitigation of wetland issues at the airport relative to the rebuilding of the EOC. So some of this work is already in place, but I really believe that this overview is, and looking at priorities, uh, relative to stormwater management across the entire county is a good priority.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah, well, that, that one out there is, I think it's priority because of what that gentleman said. I mean, if you got this floodwaters, that's gonna go away, I don't know how long it take, according to how long the rain, but when you got floodwater mixed with poop, you got a problem, you got, you got a problem there, 'cause it's, that can make people sick and everything else, so, that's why I would say that was a priority, that's why I done it that way.
So, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, sir?
Yeah, well, like Commissioner Parrish was saying, all the rain, you get ten or twelve inches of rain, I mean, even my yard, my whole yard was flooded, ankle deep, probably a week, and it just, it takes time for it to dry up. Uh, but this issue we're looking at out here is low, it's, you know, it just falls off into a bottom off the pavement, and plus you got that big pond that's right beside the Bluff Road, which is beside her house right there, basically, so. But we can get with that engineer and all, look at it, and, now I have one more item I got, Mr. Ted Mostella, he called me, which I got up with him, and he's got his tractor at Ring Power is ready, and his bush hog that he bought from John Dear Place is ready, but hopefully I have somebody freed up, maybe one day next week that we can pick it up for him.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Howard, thank you for working with Mr. Ted in the airport, and trying to facilitate things with the county and save costs by having to hire somebody else to go pick it up and all, so thank you for that, and your staff.
Very important. Thank y'all, Commissioner, and I think y'all doing a very good job. And Mr. Schuler and Aaron and Michael, they also doing a very good job, thank y'all.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns, Mr. Neighbors, while we're still here this morning? Thank you, Howard, thank you for all y'all do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fonda Davis, solid waste director, animal patrol and parks and recreation.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, couple things on my report this morning. Sorry it's not showing you all, come up after we did the report. First thing is, uh, we have Mr. Willett, Beloit, scheduled to retire, it's, it's scheduled to date, it was supposed to be next year, but he, he made me aware he'd be leaving in October. Uh, with that being said, we have Mr. Henry Rochelle, who had got accident over the weekend that put two, both truck drivers out. We, we are, Willett is burned up time right now, so, we short handed in, in that area. Also, Mr. Austin Martino has put in his resignation in Parks and Rec, and we are approaching soccer season. So overall, animal control is running good, but the two departments gonna be a little short handed, so if you getting any calls concerning Parks and Rec, or either solid waste, you'll know why, so, we trying to do the best we can. With the Parks and Rec, well, back to what Mr. Neighbors was saying, when it come down to the pay, that's one of the reason why employees is leaving. Uh, Mr. Martino got a better offer, better pay, and I understand him, no hard feelings there, anytime you can better yourself, please do so. Uh, but, when we look at, have Evergreen to look at that plan over, please consider looking at Parks and Rec salary. They do a lot for the county. I know they went around to other part, other counties, surrounding counties, to look at the salary comparison, but, uh, we do a whole lot more. So please, when Evergreen look again at salaries, and also with, uh, Mr. Putnall becoming supervisor, also we may wanna open up Jonathan Kelly, which is in my department, we may need to look at him also. That's all I have right now.
Before Fonda walks away, a couple...
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, oh, we had, like he said, he had wanted to work here to have a little tragedy the other day, and I'd like to get a letter from Joe Henry, he got burning the fire the other night, and a letter from us, hoping he get, wishing he get away.
I, I don't need a motion for that, sir. I said I don't need a motion for that, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Um, if I may?
Yep.
So, uh, Fonda brought this up, and I, I'll tell you guys, if the board has no problem with that, I would like to talk to Evergreen myself with Parks and Rec. I, I understand that they look at and compares to other counties, the problem is, I think we don't have enough employees to staff the parks that we have right now. So if we're going to keep the staff, the number that we have, then, yeah, something has to change, Commissioner, so you're gonna continue to, to lose people in that department. Uh, I'll put that aside right now, but, we, we have a public hearing coming up a little later this morning, so Fonda's now telling us, potentially he's down three people?
Yeah.
Maybe? I, I don't see this morning, I, I know you, you wanted this, I, I understand, Commissioner Book.
Yeah.
However, I don't see how the board could even consider adding to other locations for, um, Leave No Trace, even if he was, even if those three gentlemen weren't leaving, or, or, you know, you didn't have that accident, the other two people were there, I still don't think at that point he had enough to staff, uh, uh, staff members to, uh, to service , uh, those locations like we were proposing this morning, much less with three employees down. I, I'll say that now, I know this is not the public hearing, but I need to, I need you as board members to keep that in your mind as you approach that public hearing later this morning, 'cause Fonda won't be here at that point. I mean, if I'm wrong, sir, I, I wanna speak for your department, but I'm just listening to what you're saying this morning, you know?
You're correct.
So, that's one of the concerns I wanted to raise while Fonda was here, in case you guys had questions for him as we approach that public hearing later on this morning. That, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, finally, any way you can stick, stick around until this public hearing is held? Because there's gonna be a lot of discussion that, that he just talked about, I don't wanna get into it now, because we're gonna have a public hearing for it.
Yeah, Commissioner, I didn't need to leave, I got a doc's appointment until I answer two fifteen.
Okay.
What time public hearing?
It's eleven.
Eleven?
I can hang around, yeah, about eleven.
I mean, I got some more questions about this.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That I don't wanna get into now, unless...
No, I, I do have an item from my report, we might as well talk about now since Fonda's here. So, um, page twenty-three on your packet, uh, item number one, last meeting the board was informed of the division of state lands request for an updated land management plan for the old FDOT building in Caravelle leased from the state. In the update, in the updated plan, the county agreed to some repairs, vegetation trimming around the building, and eventually re-roofing the two sheds. The board asked for a copy of the lease to verify the county's responsibility to maintain the buildings, and asked that I inquire about the possible transfer of the property to the county. I've sent you the lease with the language that addresses what maintenance and upkeep the county's responsible for. So, is the board ready to approve the updated plan and submit it to the state? In addition, the following is wording from the Division of State Land regarding the possible ownership of the property. I did reach out to them, sent to them, this is what they said. Franklin County would have to submit a request for a release of lease. This would require sixty-day noticing period to all state agencies. If there were interest from another state agency to take that space over under a new lease, they would have to then enter into that new lease. This would require Franklin County to vacate their current location. If there were no interest, we could entertain selling the property to Franklin County. So, is the board willing to chance another state agency wanting that building? I bring that up while Fonda's standing in front of you, because he uses that building at the moment. This is the building around the curve, the old annex building, basically, that you use for Parks and Rec. So, I'm asking for two things here. One, can we go ahead and approve the updated land management plan to that building in Carabelle, and authorize staff to submit the plan to the Division of State Lands? That will get us in compliance with that. And the second thing, I need some direction on, are we willing to roll the dice, basically? I doubt any other state agency would want that building, but there's always a chance.
Mr. Chairman, I actually was the one that brought that up about the lease. And, and the lease did state that Franklin County is responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance. So, so I'll go ahead and make that first motion, to go ahead and do that.
So we have a motion to approve moving forward redoing that release by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not clear on, on the motion redoing the lease.
We had to, we had to redo the, the...
We had to redo.
We had to update our report, which in the report we stated, and I said like at last meeting, we, we're gonna do some improvements, basically, re-roof the two sheds, trim, and then do some light maintenance around the building, which we think county staff could, could do. So that's the, that's the motion we're talking about right now.
We're not talking about trying to purchase the property.
Oh, no, that's to a separate motion.
And open up the door for anybody else that wants it.
That's a separate motion, I just wanna be able to submit that, that report to the state. Keep us in compliance.
Any more discussion?
That's just, so if I understand, it's just for us to clean up round the bill.
That's right.
Something, okay.
Yeah.
And have the authority to remove the two sheds.
I was trying to be nice and not look at you, but yes.
And have the, have the authority to remove the two sheds.
Again, that falls on the...
That's up to us, yes.
Again, that falls on the Parks and Rec.
I hear you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, real, real quick, when we talked about the lease at the last meeting, you know, mainly when you, when you do a lease for somebody, you paying a nominal fee for the lease, and then the owner is responsible for all that stuff.
Right.
Well, as, looking at the lease, they sent out to us a copy of the lease. We're not, we're not leasing for two thousand dollars a month. They're, they're calling us to lease fees, not costing us really anything, other than we have to keep the property up, and we're responsible for the maintenance, but we're not actually paying a lease fee.
Right.
Which, in the real world, when you think about a lease, you're paying money out, like you lease a place to live, and then the owner's responsible for everything. So that, the, the lease they sent out, if you read, everybody read it, specifies what our responsibilities are, and we're not actually putting out money to lease the property. We're given the right to use that property, but we're all responsible for maintaining and taking care of the property.
Exactly, sir.
So I wanted to clarify how all this got going about, you know, just turn it over to us if we pay a lease, and we gotta maintain it too, but that's really not the case.
Any additional discussion for you, sir?
Paying a dollar a year, a dollar.
Something like that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. And how do, how do you guys feel about asking them to take a chance with us winding up with the potential to buy the building, or let another state agency do?
I'd say leave it alone.
I believe we should go for it, roll the dice on it, go. They, they not gonna put no humongous price on that piece of property they in use.
Yeah, I don't think the price is the problem, whether it's warning us that if another state agency wants it, they get that, they have first rights to it, basically.
Yeah, but if we getting the use at it, and it ain't gonna be that much, they ain't gonna charge you nothing.
Okay, so now I look at you, worst case scenario, we lose that building, what happens to Parks and Rec?
The employees on the east end will have to report to the landfill unless the county have another.
Okay.
So that's the point.
Okay, that's, that's, that's worst case scenario.
Yeah, equipment and all that, we stayed on that area.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say we just leave that building and leave everything alone. You know, there's several state agencies that surround our county. I can just see the forestry department wanting that. And you think this county is seventy miles long. Fonda needs a staging area on that eastern side, and that's where that, that operates very well there.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner. Commissioner Lockley, was that a motion you made, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve going forward and soon about the potential for us to own the property after the state goes through their period of seeing if anybody else is interested in it. Do we have a second? Do we have a second, too, the motion's on the floor? Motion, guys, for lack of a second. Is there any other action needed on that item, sir?
No, sir, I was saying two things I needed to know from the board.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Davis?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you for everything you do, we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I got something real quick. I know, Mr. Davis, you had mentioned that you're short-staffed, and I'm, I'm sorry for that. I did get a call yesterday, I guess it's starting soccer season in Brumman Park. They were, somebody called and said that they had, they had hitchhikers all over the uniforms, and said they were having to pick off hitchhikers. I know that, I explained to them, they, it might not have been mowed recently because of the rain, and it's probably still wet out there. So if you could just take a look into that, I'd appreciate it. They got, I think, soccer practice again tonight at some point in time.
Yes, good point, uh, thank you for bringing that up. We are having, we have so many travel ball teams now, that's being, uh, so they're still having to use the baseball field. So, baseball field was used for soccer field. So now we're approaching soccer, and we have traveling ball teams. So it may be a conflict, you all may hear that also. Like you, the Brumman Park, the fields, baseball field was used for soccer field. But people instead of calling, saying, well, we need to practice, same as D.W. Wilson. Even though you have the big soccer field, they still using the baseball field for practice.
Mr. Davis, can I make a suggestion, just to ask? Where all do we do soccer at, they doing the athletes point in Carabelle?
Yes.
Okay, Carabelle has a separate place for soccer, correct?
Yes.
They don't use the baseball fields.
That's right, so...
Is it something that you could talk to people who are doing travel ball, and ask them to use the fields in Carabelle for baseball, softball, or whatever? That are currently vacant, nobody's using them?
Well, Commissioner, I, I mean, it's, what I hear is not fair. You have travel ball, you have people from throughout the county.
But, sir, they play travel ball, my son was doing travel basketball. His tournaments were in Atlanta, New Orleans, and Orlando.
Yes.
It is travel ball.
Right.
You know, so I mean, before we put ourselves in the picture, maybe we need to have that discussion.
Yeah, so they're just saying that it ain't fair for the practice in Carabelle all the time, or practice in Applelet. Let's try to, bring it to wherever the kids is from. Sometime they may practice in Applelet, sometime they practice in Carabelle, sometime in East Point.
There need to be accommodations made, is all I'm saying. Baseball doesn't take precedence over everything else.
What's that?
The baseball doesn't take precedence over everything else. They do need to try to work together with people, is all I'm saying.
Right, but they see different if it's a baseball conflict.
They're, they're in travel ball, though.
Okay.
You're, you're doing Franklin County Parks and Recreation.
I got you.
Which is what our soccer program is.
I just need you to back me.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good, I'm saying it publicly, sir, I'm good.
I got you.
Yeah, not opposed to any of that, I've done that, I've done that with my own son, but that's part of the travel ball thing.
Got you.
It's not about what's comfortable for you, I promise you.
Right.
But anyway, anything else, sir?
That's it.
And that's just my comments, it's not the reflection of the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you, appreciate all y'all do. All right, Ms. Pam Burnell, Ms. Jenny Daniels, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, we do not have any action items this morning, but on a note of what y'all were discussing previously about the Carabelle, old Carabelle Annex, uh, the Emergency Management Office has a container there and a storage building there full of sandbags that we would have to move those if another agency took over that property.
Okay. Does anyone have anything for Ms. Burnell or Ms. Daniels, while they're here this morning? Thank y'all so much for your time, we appreciate all you do, and thank you for opening sandbag locations and trying to help some of our residents in recent days. Mr. Eric Lovestrand, Extension Office Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but I do not have any action items for you this morning.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lovestrand this morning? Mr. Eric, I, I do have a question, it, it's part of your report, and it says this all the time, but I've never really just asked the question. With some of your stuff with Family and Consumer Sciences, the cooking classes that you sometimes, you guys perform for adults, where, where does that happen? How does, how does somebody find out about that?
Right now, we're working with the, I'm trying to remember the name of the organization. They've got a home base in Tallahassee, but they have representation down here. We're working with that group, actually, here at the Extension Office location in Appalachia Cola. So they're coming and utilizing our facility for classes during the day on Tuesday, and then in the evening on Tuesday as well.
Okay, for, for our next meeting, just so we can make it known publicly, in your report, could you add in those dates and times so people could be made aware if they wanted to be a part of it?
Okay, now they may have some stipulations on participation in that class. I think it's the Tallahassee Community Action Agency Group.
Right.
They have funding to work with certain clientele segments and population. So I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
But, yeah, any other programs we have that are open for any groups, we can make sure and let you folks know.
I think that would be helpful, thank you, Mr. Eric.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Commissioner? Sir?
That's that getting ahead program you talking about.
Is it called Getting Ahead, is that the name of the program?
I think it may be, yes.
Seeing there are further questions, Mr. Eric, thank you for your time, thank you for all y'all do.
Thank you, Commissioners, you as well.
Oh, go ahead, we have one more.
No, I ain't talking about you. Well, he might be way in on it. But anyway, under this bridge, east part, side, going, gotta be going east. I know we don't have nothing to do with it, it's a, it's a state problem, it's a state highway. They, the state and the government over it. But, on the, on the, under the bottom where they fish at, they got no trespass. And I wanna know why the state don't allow people to fish under there. But which, I, I want y'all write a letter and ask them why that, that was a good... People been fishing there for many, for all, ever since I was a little boy. And all of a sudden, they don't, they don't allow nobody under there. I wanna them to give us a, if they will, let us know why they don't want nobody under that fish.
Okay, that's not you, Eric, that's me. I'll, I'll contact Benny from FDOT, and I'll get an explanation as to why they did it, if they ever intend to remove it, or leave it there, and I'll, I'll let, Commissioner, I'll let you know. Actually, I'll ask Benny to give you a call, so you can maybe give him some suggestions of what they could do with that, okay?
Yeah, because, you know, I, I, I had some, some of my constituents. I talked to people in the store, and they asked me why they can't fish there no more. I said, I told my head, no idea, it's going to the state.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but it may have something to do with the footprint of the bridge being considered highway right of way or something.
Yeah, I just told my, I told my ex, see can I get an answer for them, that's all I know to do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lovestrand.
All right, thank you.
Got your permission.
So if I present something you're gonna take care of?
Oh, yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll call Benny, have, at a minimum, have Benny call Commissioner Lockley.
No, just put it, that's it, whatever she tell you, just put it on the website, so people...
Okay.
Put it on our, I think we got a website where people...
In the headline, yeah.
Yeah, that way it'll be up there in there nowhere.
Get direct them, Nick. Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Dewitt Poles, Mosquito Control.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just have some information, item for you. We, with all the excessive rain that we've had in the last couple of weeks, we've done quite a bit of larvicide, and we've treated approximately sixty-eight thousand, one hundred acres larvicide. And we picked it up on the adulticide, and also, it's like sixty-five thousand acres. I think with all the adulticide in the spring, larvicide and adulticide we've been doing, the complaints are still down. I mean, you seen on your report, four from Alligator Point, two from Carabelle, two from East Point, and two from St. John's Island, which is really low this time of year. So, oh, we had, this is not on the report, but we had one of our part-time guys was out all week, last week, so me and Scott filled in, and I am running the, the extra truck. So I think me and him put in like almost thirty hours apiece comp time, from me overtime from him last week. So, we've been very, very busy. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them this morning.
Anyone have any questions, Commissioners? Thank you for, for providing the schedule. I know it's been posted before, but it's good to have that reminder sometimes of, of what, where you're gonna be on what days with your department, you know what I mean? So that's, that's a good thing, thank you.
I got one.
When you, big, big grain event like this, it go in your budget, though.
Yeah, well, the, the larvicide and part of it, it's, it's very expensive. I mean, I just ordered some more adulticide this morning, because it looks like I'm running a little short, and it's went up twenty-five percent since my last order in spring. I did have the money to order that, but the larvicide, it's like nine hundred something dollars a case, and so we're very, you know, stingy with that. We've had some people in the past, you know, request us to give them that, and they would just go put it out there themselves, which they're not allowed to, but with the expense, I mean, two, three, four dollars for every tablet. So, you know, but yeah, I think we'll be okay this year, but, um, yeah, it's just an added cost for these big grain events.
Okay, people's into it.
Look, Dewitt, how, how much longer before you retire? I hate to ask you that, but...
Oh, well, I guess it's kind of cordon, but, but I'm in the drop. I can work up to five more years, I've been in there about six months now, in the drop program. So, I guess I'm officially retired, but I'm gonna try to work as long as I can.
Okay, I, I, I just wanna make sure that we were, that Scott had the proper certifications and all to take over.
I'm, I'm actually working on that with Scott. He's informed me this morning that he was getting ready to take his director's exam again. And I do have some other things in the works with Virginia, trying to also get some certification. She's gotten some. But, yeah, I, I've been working towards this for years and years and years, all the way back when Mr. Lane worked with us, you know, and, and then again, he left and came to work for the city for the same problem we talked about today, the cause of pain. And it just seems like when you get somebody almost to the point that they can take over, then for whatever reason, they leave or transfer to the road department or something.
No tongue reason to ask that question, not trying to push you out or anything, just kind of seeing where the county is as far as lining up, who will be able to step in and assume that position. And making sure that we're, we're prepared for the inevitable, I guess you would say.
Yeah, transition.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, you know, when we talk about employee payroll and, and... and, and progressive wage raises, et cetera, we just now heard another testimony of one of our employees that's working on new additional credentials from a merit standpoint. And I think, again, this is where we see, where we get great value from, for what we pay our employees. And here's an employee who's working for higher merit and higher credentials.
We're actually signed up this morning to take, F taxes has a program, I guess you'd call it a test, for the CEUs for court exam, which is dealing with the pesticide. And we're gonna do that online Thursday morning. It's a couple hours. Just, you know, it's a continual thing.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns for Mr. Poles this morning? Mr. DeWitt, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
I was informed this morning that Ms. Roundtree is out sick today. So Commissioners, if you have any questions or concerns for our library director, you can direct them to her or through Mr. Roll to her, but she's not gonna be here this morning. Correct, Mr. Roll?
That's correct, sir.
So next, Mr. John Solomon, TDC Administrator.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Just have one action item is the basically housekeeping of the visitor center contracts. To need the board to authorize the chairman's signature on those contracts. It's an annual thing. They just kind of go in every year, but it's annually. We have to get them updated and signed.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And Commissioners, the only other thing I have, information item. Have got contact with the city as I spoke to y'all at the last meeting. The ribbon cutting for the Lafayette Pier Pavilion will be October 3rd at 4:30 PM. I do invite all of y'all to please attend and let's show off what great work the County Commission did for the City of Appalachia.
Ask your question on that.
Yes, sir.
That's the ribbon cutting, but is that thing open up for people to fish on there?
Yes, sir. It's ready to go. I walked down there the other day.
I guess my question is, do they let people fish off it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There was a gentleman down there throwing his cast net when I walked down there, so, yes, sir.
Yeah, I ain't know whether they had opened it up to the public yet.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or concerns for Mr. Solomon? Thank you for your time.
Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Ted Mosteller, Inter Airport Manager.
Good morning, everyone. Ted Mosteller.
Morning.
Most of my reports this morning, as I've given you, is for your information. I do have one item that I would like to bring up, in case you have any heartburn about it. We have one particular teehanger tenant who is very unhappy about a leaking roof. And I would like to get some materials and get that patched because our roof repair seems to be out the road a little ways.
I would prefer the board give, if there's a motion to be made, let me engage a contract to look at that with the board. Not I don't think Ted can or cannot patch it, but I prefer a contract to do that rather than Ted.
Well, we do have Jay out there who is willing to help me.
Say again?
Jay who works for Centric, the mower guy, maintenance guy.
It's mainly an issue of safety, Ted.
Taking liability.
It's mainly an issue of safety, for your safety. Yeah, yeah. It would be best for, you know, the county to actually have someone who actually has a workers' comp policy or something, you know, just for people to be on the roof doing their repairs.
I'll make a motion and follow the recommendation of administrative staff.
Second.
So we're having a motion to have, I guess, to engage with the company to come look at the roof and see what needs to be done to try to get it patched?
Yes.
So we can make it forward to where we're talking about doing a roof replacement?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Yes.
I'm just making sure what we're making a motion.
Yes.
And we had that motion by Commissioner Parrish and second by Commissioner Bolt.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Ted, I don't want you to say you falling and can't get up.
We don't ever want to have that.
That's basically...
You know what, Commissioner, I could have never said it, otherwise you'd just...
I have been all over that airport and roost and everywhere else, so I understand the situation.
Any other discussion Commissioners before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Before Ted walks away, there's one thing I have. Ted, I'm sorry, last week was rough and I haven't had a chance to call you. If you go to page 25 in your packets, Commissioner, the last item 11 I have in my report, the county has received notice from Tyndall Air Force Base that there's no longer a need for the site located near the Appalachia Cola Regional Airport. That lease was set to expire on June 30th in 2033. However, all Air Force assets have been removed from that location and the area has been left to return to its original state. We'll conduct a final environmental baseline survey to ensure compliance. Then we'll coordinate final termination procedure. I'll update the board once that is completed. So Ted, it's all yours again, the Air Force.
You took the words out of my mouth, sir, and I concur completely that they don't need to be on the airport with that tower.
There we go.
Anything else for Mr. Mosteller?
I will stand by for the John presentation and also I think Aaron has some stuff, Michael too.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Eric, do you have anything about airport that needs to be handled now or you?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay. All right, so, so before we transition to the next part of the meeting, let's recess for five minutes.
Hi, I'm Cara Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in 2002, was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand in surf.
Cara to me is much more than an agent. She's become a friend. And since we bought the house, we've needed work done. And she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth and value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house and the estate, the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Cara.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at 850-653-7753. We understand that managing a healthy lifestyle while balancing life's other demands can be challenging at times. So the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including, but not limited to, COVID-19 vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity. Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, COPD, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups. To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit franklin.floordathhealth.gov or call 850-653-2111.
Do you need a vacation? A vacation that you can reconnect with the ones you love? Spend time relaxing, not rushing. Visit Florida's Forgotten Coast, the Florida you remember.
Fisherman's Choice Bait and Tackle has all you need for your day of fishing. They have fresh and saltwater bait, an unmatched selection of mirror lures, and a wide selection of Berkeley gulp, plus fresh and live bait and all the rigs and tackle you need for a great day of fishing, including brands like Penn and Shimano. They are also the only bait and tackle shop in Franklin County where you can get a fishing license. And don't miss their wide selection of marine supplies, coolers, and more. Fisherman's Choice is located at 330 Highway 98 in East Point.
Take a haunted historical tour in downtown Appalachia Cola with your own personal ghostly guide. Hear ghost stories about people from the town's past told in front of some of the city's most historic sites. You'll also hear some ghost hearse of Bloody Bluff and more. For days, times, and to book, visit appalachghostour.com.
Remember when vacations were peaceful and relaxing? They still can be. Let us show you. Visit Florida's Forgotten Coast, the Florida you remember.
Take a paranormal tour of downtown Appalachia Cola and see if any ghosts still roam the streets. Your creepy guide will tell you some ghostly history while using a spirit box at select locations on the tour to see if any spirits want to communicate and if they have anything to say. And you will get to use EMF detectors and other ghost hunting equipment. Reservations are required as space is limited. Book your tour at appalachghostour.com.
The new Florida's Forgotten Coast app. See the latest beach conditions, things to do, places to get delicious seafood, and great shopping along Florida's Forgotten Coast, plus more. Also, check out the Explore the Forgotten Coast Passport and Forgotten Coast Foodie Passport to be entered for your chance to win a trip to the Forgotten Coast. Download the new Florida's Forgotten Coast app in the Apple App Store and Google Play Store. This mobile app brought to you by the Franklin County Tourist Development Council. Seeing our beautiful piece of paradise, please make sure you visit our local shops, restaurants, galleries, and take some time to experience something different and take a fishing trip or tour with one of our experience guides. Our neighbors and their businesses are the heartbeat of our community. Thank you for visiting and remember to shop local, eat local, and fish local. This message is brought to you by the Appalachia Cola Bait Chamber of Commerce.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. The next thing on our agenda is Mr. John Collins from AVCON. Talking about obstruction removal project and airport master plan update.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. As Chairman mentioned, I have two items on the agenda today. The first item is, at the last board meeting, we opened bids for the obstruction removal project at the airport. And the goal of that job is to remove trees on the airport that are currently obstructions for approaches to runway 18. The bid documents included tree removal all across the airport. But our focus in this project is just the north end of runway 18. We received two bids, and the low bidder was Collins Land Services out of Tallahassee. They have done quite a bit of similar clearing work at airports. I personally work with them on some of their airports. And so my recommendation, as I provided the county this past week, is to award this project to Collins Land Services. It's $138,500 for the base bid, and that will clear all the trees on airport property north of runway 18.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve the recommendation by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt. Is that correct? Thought I heard a second. All right, any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's an N. Please proceed. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I am also excited to be here today, to finally be at this point where we have provided the final draft of the airport master plan update. It was made public. You know, we provided it. It was about 40 days ago. We provided links for download to view the documents. And this project, it's hard to believe, this project actually started in April 2019. But as you know, we did go through COVID during that process as well. So I did slow down a little bit, you know, some of our faces because some of there is public. We need to have some public outreach during some parts of this. And of course, a lot, during certain steps of the project, we need to get feedback from the FAA and approval from them before we can go to the next step. And that took some time because a lot of people work from home. So we're very excited to be here today, and we're very proud of the product that we do have, we've made available to you. So we did, during, as I mentioned, we did make these documents available to the public. And we did receive three different sets of comments from the public. And we reviewed all three of those comments. And I just want to go through a couple of those concerns with you briefly. Again, I do want to be very respectful of your time, and so I'm going to go through these on a high level. And if you did want to ask any specific questions, I'll be happy to get as deep as you'd like to with those. Before I forget, we do have Mary Soderstrom in our Orlando office. She's our senior aviation planner, and she put together a majority of his documents. So I do have her available here today in case there's any questions that she might be able to provide additional information for.
Okay.
So in these, the comments that we did receive from the plug, there's really three main focuses, three main concerns. The first one, in the introduction chapter, we do have quite a bit of information about, or you know, what is, what do we have, what kind of facilities do we have here at the airport? And there were the few, that chapter was put together in June of 2019. At that time, since then, since we put that chapter together and together the information, we met with airport management, airport tenants, we reviewed the documents that were available to us, and we put that whole section together. Since then, there have been some changes. You know, namely, the airport manager has changed. There's a non-directional beacon at the airport that was decommissioned since that time. And so some of the comments were, you know, some of this information is outdated, which is true. And so we've already started the process of updating that information in those first two chapters. And so we should have it ready here probably the next week or so. So we certainly, you know, we will, any inconsistencies or any kind of outdated information will be addressed in the final printed version that we do provide to the county. The second concern was the number of based aircraft that we include in our aviation forecast chapter, like the number of aircraft that are based at the airport. That section was put together in June, also put together in June of 2019. At that time, the FAA required that any master plans, that you use the number of based aircraft that is included in the FAA terminal area forecast. They have a nationwide document for every airport that says, you know, here's your number of based aircraft. Here's typically your number of operations. In June of 19, that is, that was the requirement to pull that initial number from that database. So we did that. We put together the whole chapter, and we received FAA approval on that chapter in July of 2019. And that was required before we go any farther in the document. We had to pause for a minute, get FAA approval on that, and then proceed to the next step. Now, after the FAA approved that, then the FAA required that airports now input your number of based aircraft into their online database. BasedAircraft.com is the database. And it wasn't until December of that year that the FAA made that a requirement. So what happens there is, you know, you would input all your tail numbers for the airplanes that are at the airport. And then the FAA would kind of look to all the other airports and see if there's multiple airports that are claiming that same aircraft as being based at that airport. And then they would figure out, okay, well, based on the owner's address, where, you know, where really are they based at? Because, you know, there's a lot of airports who have maybe people who are coming down for the winter only, when the aircraft is mainly based up north, something like that. They'll kind of work through those details, and the FAA will come back and say, okay, of these 40 airplanes you've put in, you really, you know, maybe 30, 35, whatever that number is, they'll confirm that. So again, going back, in this master plan study, we did include, as required at the time, the 20-based aircraft that was in the FAA database. And so there was a desire to update that number based on the current aircraft that might be at the airport. We could certainly do that. What I'd recommend is approving the master plan as it is, and then when the, when all that information is input, when the county inputs that information into the county database, I'm sorry, the FAA database, we could go back and selectively update Chapter 3, which is the forecast chapter, with whatever ultimately that number is that the FAA agrees to. Whether it's 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, whatever that number is, we can, we'd be happy to update that chapter separately. We can do a separate update to the master plan. But I do want to be clear that even if we updated from 20, say 40. Say we have 40, 45-based aircraft at the airport. The two things that your base aircraft impacts is, number one, your apron space at the airport. Make sure you have enough apron space for the airplanes. And number two, your hangar space. At Appalachia Cola, we have a massive amount of apron space. So increasing the number of based aircraft would not increase, of course, the number, the amount of apron that you need to accommodate those airplanes over the 20-year planning period. And number two, in the long-term plan for the airport, we show three brand-new T-hangers being constructed at the airport to increase capacity by 50% compared to what you have right now. And so even if we increase the base aircraft, we've already counted for the growth in T-hangers at the airport. So even if we updated the number of based aircraft at the airport, that would not have an impact ultimately on your long-term plan for the airport. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Also, at this point in time, there is no direct link between FAA and DOT funding based on the number of based aircraft you have at the airport. So it also wouldn't really provide any benefit from a funding perspective. But if that's the county's desire, we'd be happy to do that. Again, once the information's in the database, we'd be happy to go back and update that chapter separately, if that's your desire. Thirdly, there was a concern about any references to considering the closure of runway 1836 at the airport. Since, really, I would say back in, starting in 2010, the FAA has been asking a lot of questions about that third runway. And I know Chairman, you noticed that at the last annual meeting we had with the FAA. Is there a very, it's like a dog on a bone. It would not let go of it. They just kept asking, why do you have the runway, all that stuff? And so what we did with this master plan update is, we're not hiding anything. We put all the information on the table, saying, look, you guys want us to look at this? We're going to look at it. And we make it very clear in this master plan that the county has decided to keep the runway open indefinitely. There's no, there's no, we're not closing the runway at any point. And the long-term future airport layout plan shown in this document does not show the runway closed. It is open long-term. The airspace is being protected for it. So this gives us an opportunity to answer, once and for all, to the funding agencies and anybody who's asking, this runway is remaining open forever? You know, we don't see, there's no time where we show this runway being closed. So I think, I do believe it's in the county's best interest to leave that discussion in this master plan because, again, once and for all, we're putting this on the table. And we're making it very clear, there are no closures planned for this runway. So that's my recommendation as your consultant. So those are really the three main items. And so, again, the, some of the information that needs to be updated in the first part, we're already working on that, and that will be included in the final printed version that we provide to the county. So what I'm asking for today is consideration for approval of this master plan document contingent upon updating, of course, the update, some of the information in the initial chapters from 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I'm going to move to, first of all, I want to have a discussion there. That's okay, before we make a move. I spoke to Mr. Collins over the phone yesterday, and a lot of the things he brought up is things that I have on my little list concerning back in 2018. A lot of this stuff is not updated, such as the NDB. Additionally, you've got the weather, weather issue. And then, of course, the runway closure. Now, I spoke to you earlier about any future land requirements. So obviously, you just, could you elaborate a little bit?
Absolutely. And thank you for bringing that up. I did want to mention that today. There, I think there was a concern that we do show, and this is a very exciting change in this master plan. We do show the 8,000-foot runway extension for your main runway, which, you know, awesome. We're looking long-term. We're optimistic about development here at the airport. 8,000 feet would be enough to accommodate either FedEx or UPS operations at the airport, even possibly a DOT contractor who might want to have, you know, MRO activities at the airport manufacturing. Some way we can support tend to air force base, the 8,000-foot runway would get you there. So we do have that shown in the long-term plan for the airport. What we also included, Commissioner Ward, is the, we do show the needed property acquisition for that. So we do show on page 23, I believe, of the airport layout plan, we identify that as a future property acquisition in case there's ever funds available from Triumph. Or, at this point, it's not FAA or DOT eligible, but we do have it shown on our plan as that is, we want to acquire that property at some point if we do want to extend this runway. And that property acquisition accounts for the runway, parallel taxway extension, and the runway protection zone at the end of it. It's about 30 acres or so is what we have shown in the plan. So that is in the plan. That property acquisition is in the plan.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Additionally, and I know this may not be for the master plan, I don't, Mr. Merle stepped out. But we have, I've had questions about hangers being currently used. I was under the understanding that if it's not aviation-related, the storage in the hangar, that it might jeopardize our funding from FAA and FDOT. What you said on the phone yesterday, as long as there's a plane in there, you can have a vehicle or. I just, my thing is, I want to be able to access hangers and make sure that whoever's leasing it from the county has what they're supposed to have in there, is aviation-related, so it doesn't jeopardize funding in the future. That's my only concern. I know this probably isn't on the master plan, but we may need to update our lease agreements, especially if we're getting new T-hangers moving forward. We need to go back and reanalyze all our current tenants and make sure they are not running business out of it, that they're, you know, not storing three or four vehicles there.
Own goods.
You know, things like that. And we need to have an idea of what's being stored in there, make sure that there's nothing in there that shouldn't be in there. I know that has nothing to do with the master plan, but I did want to bring that up since we're talking about it anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Additionally, I think that's pretty much, I have what I have on my list of things. Things you've already addressed. I had also that you addressed about the airport manager and the runway closure and things like that. So I appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to move to approve this airport master plan with contingent upon the changes that you have to make from the updates from 2018 to now.
Okay. So a motion on the floor to approve the master plan with the discrepancies updated.
Yes, sir.
Is the way I would put it.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, Commissioners? I do have a couple of things I would like to discuss. Thank you, number one, for taking the time to talk with me again about this last Friday when I called you from the Miami Airport. It is a good thing that we're looking at some of these discrepancies, you know, whatever errors were made. But I want to ask, is this master plan for our county airport, is it a living document?
Well, absolutely. And actually, I, if we waited three more months to submit it, I'm sure there would be other items in the introduction section or the existing conditions chapter that would change. So yeah, absolutely. And that's just how master plans work. You know, fortunately, we do have a very dynamic airport. Things do change, and yeah, every month, two, three, you're going to have things that change. Yes, it is a living, breathing document. And as far as updating your master plan, really, the FAA, the funding agencies want you to update it when, really, typically every 10 years or so, or unless you have some kind of big change. If you have some big tenants that we end up landing here at the airport, we really need to evaluate it. But yeah, it is, we can't update selectively sections even if we really need to over time without having to update the entire master plan document. So yes, it is, it's a breathing, a living document, yes, sir.
Okay. The reason I ask that is just because I wanted to have that kind of discussion on the record and publicly. Because I know that there are, as you say, if we waited another six months, there's always going to be some kind of discrepancy, probably.
Yes, sir.
That's just inherent with the fact that things change over time.
Right.
One of the other things that I did want to actually talk about, though, was the, some of the things we're looking at doing and the importance of them. You know, will we ever be able to extend the runway? We don't know, but I'm glad it's in there. We've had some discussions with several different groups and agencies and dukes involved with their site selection stuff, trying to help us market our airport as for industrial uses. So, you know, there might be a significant change where we have to look at doing this again before 10 years.
Yes, sir.
You know, as stuff happens. But, you know, being able to handle the discrepancies and being able to know going forward that we're doing our best to do what's right by everyone, I just think that's very important.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to also remark about runway 1836. With regard to the FAA, and they're wondering about what we're going to do about that. The future of that airport looks like it's going to see a surge in development. And that even makes runway 1836 another viable quality option to keep it there.
Let me get a comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, specifically as we talk about extending the runway to 8,000 feet, the board needs to really pay attention, if we ever get to that point. As Chairman said, we don't know if we're going to get there or not. It's in the master plan. That's fine. But you have to think about the quality of life of the people that surround that airport. And there's a lot of people wanting to do this at the airport. They want to do that. But they don't live nowhere around it. They live 25, 30, 50 miles from it. So they're not impacted by what's going on at that airport. I represent everybody that lives around that airport. And I can remember back when the airport was dormant. I hunted doves out there on the airport runway because there was no tenants there, where there was no FBO. There was nothing. It was gone. And then it started coming back. So, and I'm all for the airport, and I think the people that surround the airport. I've never had one person call me in all the years I sit right here complain about a plane taking off or a plane landing. Never had one complaint. Had some complaints about the ice spray when shaking the pictures off the people's walls.
Right.
Yeah, I get complaints about that. And complaints of things going on round and round and round at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning when the parents have to get the kids to bed and get them up for school the next morning. So, but people that don't live around there don't hear none of that. Because their life and quality of life is not impacted by that. So I just wanted to make that statement. I mean, having looked over the airport master plan, what I could, as some of the comments say, I spent weeks, or some of the comments people sent to us, that I spent weeks looking at this thick document, the airport master plan. Here are some of my recommendations, and I read some of those recommendations. But you have to understand, the board needs to understand the quality of life aspects. That is a community airport. That is not Panama City where they went out in the middle of the woods and built an airport, which is where you can do airport zoning, and you can limit development. But all the development around this little community airport happened when the airport was dormant. There was nothing there, nobody there. And as a young kid, teenager, I hunted dove out there, and there wasn't a plane nowhere or nobody nowhere. So, and it's transition, and it's come back, and that's fine. That's fine. I'm just saying, as the board makes things in the future, they need to think about the quality of life of the people that live around that airport.
Yes, sir.
And had, had this been a big airport, had it had airport zoning, you wouldn't have all these homes and all built around the airport, from the north to the south to the east to the west. I mean, ain't so many to the west. Most of it's north, south, and east. But anyway, I just wanted to make that statement. But I think you've done a good job of working through all of this.
Right.
And it is a big, a big undertaking that AVCON has done.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And just to add quickly, if this, if this does come to fruition, that we're looking at a runway extension, that we're looking at a runway extension, uh, we are required to do an environmental assessment of this extension, and possibly, depending on the outcome of that, an environmental impact statement. And that does focus on quality of life. Um, that, those studies would analyze noise from larger aircraft and moving your threshold. Um, it evaluates light levels, um, you know, coming from the aircraft. And there's a lot of impacts that had to be evaluated and approved before we would even, we could even consider extending the runway. And that, but that's part of, that's really part of the project itself. Once we, once we find that, um, once those levels are triggered, that we need it, then we can start going down that path and really just make sure that we don't have, but the quality of life is a big piece of that evaluation.
Right, and, and one more statement I'd like to make, as some people would, would say, well, Smokey won't let nothing come into the airport. There has never been one manufacturing company or any other thing that would bring jobs to Franklin County that has been turned down by the Board of County Commissioners. Not one. So, all of that is just, uh, pie in the sky, I guess you would say. We're all about jobs. And the people that surround that airport are all about jobs. They have children, too, that need jobs. Good, quality, high-paying jobs. So, that's, that's not factual that I have prevented anything as far as jobs coming to Franklin County and coming to that airport. That is one of our biggest economic, uh, growth spots, I guess you would say, for lack of a better word.
Right.
So, that's, that's fiction, I mean, that's, that's not factual. We're all about jobs, and we are, I got children that need jobs, too.
Right.
So, you know, I just want to make that statement, but I think you've done a good job. And, and as the chairman, you have said earlier, it is a living document that can change and, but the other statement I made about the future of the airport considering the quality of life issue, it may not be this year, it may be 15 years from now when another board makes this decision. But I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, you need to think about the people that surround that and, and, and think about that when you're making those decisions.
The only other thing I'll say, Mr. John, that, looking at the extensiveness of this document, and this is just, I guess, a indictment on myself. I was about 10 or 15 pages in, reading all the different numbers for the trees you marked.
Yeah.
That was marked, before I realized that that's what y'all were doing and marking all the trees that need removing. And I was, oh, okay.
And, and a lot of that, it's, it, that is, for example, the tree location maps and the, you know, the removal, that is directly required by the FAA. They say, you must do this. Because we have to identify the trees before we really spend time into, hey, let's remove them. And, yes, there's, there's a lot of stuff in there that we have to do just because the FAA says, as a condition of approval, of receiving funding for this, you have to do all, all this stuff.
Right, and I, I realize it made the document thicker, but again, it's a necessary part of it because we want to remove the trees. So, thank you for that. It's just one of those things, you know, I looked through the first part and started taking some notes, and I'm looking through this, I'm like, how am I gonna take notes on all these numbers? Then I realized it was marking the actual trees that need to be removed and that kind of stuff.
Right.
So, anyway, just a side note. Any other discussion before we vote this morning? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to propose a motion that, uh, we undertake a formal survey of all of the occupants of the current T-hanger system there at that airport to be certain that only aviation-related activities are happening in that T-hanger system.
Basic, I'm sorry.
I, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I don't know, do we need to do that in a motion? I mean, I think I've kind of gave direction.
No, well, I was gonna do based on her direction. I was gonna arrange with Ted, Aaron, myself, and the FBO to do a site visit of, of every hangar and report the summary of that visit back to the board.
Okay, they'll have authority to access those hangars and everything happening from that.
Oh, we do, yes, sir.
Good, all right.
The county does, the county staff does, yes.
Okay.
My, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As I recall, back in the day when we had those T-hangers, and there weren't enough planes to occupy those T-hangers, and they were sitting there empty, they were rented to people with other uses.
Yes.
To try to collect money out of the assets to put back into the airport. So, that's how we got to where we're potentially at today is having non-aviation-related activities going on in those T-hangers. Because we built them, there were no planes in them, and that was an asset that could be utilized to. Things have changed. I'm not saying things haven't changed now to where you have more aircraft out there, so that it is something that needs to be looked at. I just wanted to lay some history there as to how some of these T-hangers at one time were used for un-airport-related activities, trying to generate revenue for the airport because there were no planes there to occupy those T-hangers. Now, things have changed, there are more planes at the airport. So, yeah, it does need to be looked at. I just want to give the board a little bit of information of how that happened and why it happened at the time that it did happen.
Commissioner Parrish, that, that's, uh, another reason why we as a board need to continue to push to try to envelop, to develop some of our industrial spaces outside the airport. So, if we do have some of those tenants there that aren't airport uses that could be moved to, you know what I mean? We really need to work on some horizontal and vertical infrastructure there and get some things going.
Mr. Chairman.
Good point, Mr. Chairman, good point.
Can we address a timeframe as to when we'll have this hangar inventory completed?
Uh, we'll try to get it done. I can't promise you the next meeting, Commissioner Ward. I'll try to get it done as soon as possible.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Tim.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis had a, got a appointment at his doctor. Can we move, take your answer?
Oh, we're supposed to do it at 11:00 P.M.?
Yeah, we can't start the, um, the, we can't start the public hearing, yes, sir.
Does anyone, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Collins while he's here? Thank you, sir, we appreciate you.
Thanks, Mary, for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. She's been up there patiently, Commissioner.
All right, uh.
Kim is on?
Yes, let's try to go ahead and handle that before we do our public hearing. Good morning, Ms. Kim.
Good morning.
Sorry, I didn't give you a proper introduction. Ms. Kim Bodine from Career Source Gulf Coast is here to talk about local workforce services plan. Go ahead, Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little froggy today. If I cough, you'll have to excuse me. I'm a little under the weather, but I'm gonna try to get out through this with no coughing. So, that'll be a real challenge. Um, every, we have a four-year plan that is required by the federal government and by the state. Um, I don't know why they call it a four-year plan because we have to modify it every year or two years. But, so, we've been required to modify that. It really, um, it has about seven sections, and it basically covers everything that we do. It talks about our strategies, it talks about the economies of the, um, footprint that we operate in. It talks about our partnership with, um, education, economic development, business, and our local elected officials. And it also includes the performance metrics that we negotiated with the states so that the Florida could put their negotiation together with the federal government. We have performance metrics we must meet and that we're measured by. So, all of those things are contained in the plan. I think it ended up being about 80 pages long. Um, there's, there's nothing surprising in there. Um, we, we compile it based upon the format that the state requires. And so, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the plan or if anybody has any input to the plan.
Commissioner. Ms. Kim, I will say, I, I thought it was kind of interesting, I think it's around page 13, that showing the future growth of some of the sectors that's gonna be needed in our area, that, uh, health was about 20% and construction was about 15. That'd be consistent with what we've been having going on, especially since Hurricane Michael. Uh, the other thing is on, uh, I believe it's page 47. The only thing that, and I don't know if there's a different way to do it, it has the, I think this is more for students that are receiving help, uh, to go back and forth to school. The, and I appreciate the fact that it's using Panama City's average for fuel, but Franklin County is usually, tends to be about 50 cent a gallon more. So, I don't know if anything could be, because it's a regional approach. I don't know if there's a way we can look at that based on where the students are coming from versus where they're going to, but just a, just a thought or an idea.
No, that's absolutely important to us. We don't have any students that are receiving mileage right now from Franklin County, but that doesn't mean we won't. And, and I think that we should change that to be, because I think Gulf County is probably a little different as well. That's a very good point, I appreciate that.
No problem.
We, we don't want our students to be, have a hardship getting through their training because all the students we help are normally economically disadvantaged to begin with.
Right, yes, ma'am. Well, and I know it's a four-year plan, that's all I was, I brought it up.
Well, that is actually part of our local policy, and our board can change local policies at any point when we meet, and we would just send the change to the plan to the state to incorporate.
Thank you for that clarification.
Oh, well, thank you, I, I really appreciate you pointing that out, and I'm impressed that you read it.
Oh, yeah, oh, 96 pages, good, Ms. Kim.
It, it's lengthy, yes, sir.
Is any other student receiving, in other counties, receiving mileage?
We have a few in Bay County that are receiving mileage. Um, that you have to travel more than 25 miles one way to receive a mileage payment. Um, and so, the students that live further away and have to drive in for training, they, they take odometer readings. We know their address because we have to take their address, place of residence, and verify that when they're enrolled with us. So, anybody that's traveling more than 25 miles one way, they'll get mileage reimbursement.
Well, that means Franklin County should be automatically.
Yes, yes, any, any student that we're funding their training for is eligible for that. And that's for adults. With youth, there's a whole, there's a whole different set of incentives and payments. We actually used to pay a training allowance to every student who attended all of their classes. Their instructors would fill out a form for us, um, and the federal government has since discontinued our ability to do that. We were just trying to offset the cost of getting to training, having lunch, um, you know, because we know there's some, usually some additional expense. But the feds have stopped us from, from doing that any longer. And it wasn't a lot of money, I think it was $5 a day, but it was a help to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, are, are we needing to, uh, do a motion and vote to sign a request letter, or what, what do you need from the board?
We just need you to approve the plan. It's required that our local electeds approve the plan that we created.
Okay.
I also move to approve it.
Okay, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, it's been approved.
Mr. Chairman, before, before Kim wa, uh, uh, walks away, before she leaves the meeting. Kim, is it possible for you to quickly touch? You sent an email like, uh, back on, uh, August 29th about board term limits. Uh, it was an informational email, but still, some of the commissioners had, they just wanted a kind of clarification of what all that was about.
So, um, last year, uh, the legislature passed a bill, House Bill 1507, became law. And when they did that, it reset the maximum term limits for our board members. And everyone really started over at zero from the day the law was passed. And so, we found it necessary to re, um, you know, we have to make our terms so that everybody isn't coming off the board at the same time. So, we have to stagger the terms, and so, we've applied a two- and four-year term limit and started everyone at the beginning with July 1 of last year.
So, what are, what are the actual limits there? I know they're two- or four-year terms, but is there a limit to how many consecutive terms they can serve? Or, or is that it, two or four years?
It's a, it's consecutive eight years. They can't serve more than eight years unless they're on the board by virtue of a position. If it's a college president or a school superintendent or someone that's mandated to be on our board, then those, those don't, the term limits don't apply to them.
Okay. All right, good to know.
If I could, I'd just like to bring up one other thing that I'll be, um, bringing forward in the future. Uh, also because of the REACH Act, uh, Career Source Florida is working with a consulting firm, Ernst &amp; Young. And they are collecting information. They've, I think a, a letter was sent to, um, the chairman of the board from Career Source Florida. It is a study to determine if workforce boards should, they, they were calling it realignment, which we all sort of took that as code for consolidation. But in Phase 2, they are calling it a board realignment and possible consolidation of workforce boards. And so, I've been working, representing the small regions for the state of Florida on these calls with Ernst &amp; Young. Um, it's not clear yet exactly how this is going to play out, but the law did have a line in it that said that the governor shall reduce the number of workforce boards. There's a long process that's entailed in that, but it seems to be getting fast-tracked. I don't know what that means for us. Um, I, my colleague, Richard Williams, and I have been working with Marty Coley to talk, um, about this with legislative representatives to help them understand what workforce boards do and how this could be disruptive, especially for our rural counties. So, I'll just keep you posted on that. I may request some meetings with you to discuss it individually. And at some point, they are planning to have calls with local elected officials. The consultants told us in Orlando last week that they would have a call with only one local elected official for the area. And I said, that's, that's not gonna work for us. We, we can't just have one, we, I have three counties. We should allow any local elected official that wants to be on the call to be on the call. They are, are partners, they're, you know, in law dedicated to be partnered with workforce boards. It's unacceptable that we would consider only one local elected official for an area to be on this call. I think they'll change that. I think that's gonna be a problem across the state. So, um, you know, it's just a process. And, um, we, we haven't seen any maps. We don't know what kind of consolidation they could be talking about, where it would happen. Um, so, you know, I'll, I'll keep you as posted as I can on how this sort of moves through the process.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Ms. Kim, Mr. Commissioner Parrish, we need to keep what we got because you understand what's going on in our rural counties. And we got different needs in the larger counties. And, and if they consolidate all this and our, our, uh, our board would be in Ocala or somewhere, they're not gonna know what's going on in Franklin County. They're not gonna know what's going on in Bay County or, or Gulf County. We need to keep, so I'm encouraging the board to, whatever we can do to support you, to maintain what we have. I think that's the way we need to do it. And if you'd let us know, let the chairman know. Uh, and you don't need, I agree with you about one elected official. Could that be an official from Bay County that don't know what's going on in Franklin County? I mean, I, I see a lot of problems just as you just brought up. So, I, I very much support our local workforce board, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It is, um, I think that they're trying to wrap up the Phase 2 of this by December. And it's gonna be a push, um, you know, to get across the state of Florida[1679.12] We're Thanksgiving and Christmas in play to pull a summary report together by February's board meeting for the state. So, you know, we're just very focused on it. We've hired a consultant to help all of Northwest Florida regions one through four to kind of take a deeper look at how we do what we do, just to be able to give you all some information and talking points as well. So, you know, we're hoping for the best but planning for the worst. I will give you my word that no matter what happens, we will do whatever we need to do to leave our area in the best shape it can be in. We are not going to, you know, walk away, if I lose my job, I commit to you right now, that we are still going to make sure that whatever happens in this area, that we are integral in making sure that good things and the services you need happen. But I don't, I don't expect to lose my job, but if I do, you know, that's part of it. But what I'm most concerned about is all of the people that we serve. And, you know, I've been doing this for 30 years. This is sort of my life's career. And I want to make sure that we continue to do what we need to do for our communities.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you for your support.
We really do, Ms. Kim. I don't know how it'll go, but I will say this. I'll probably get in contact with you about this issue. I just come back on behalf of this board, serving at a legislative conference for the Florida Association of Counties. I'm privileged to be able to sit in Senate District Three seat on the Executive Board of Directors. I and another commissioner on this board are part of the Small County Coalition. If there's something to do with helping protect home rule in small counties, I promise you we can take it on. So I want to have that discussion with you and it'll probably be longer than what we're doing here this morning.
Absolutely. I just wanted to put it on your radar because it's moving quickly and probably a sit down is in good order to kind of walk through all of it.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Any other questions for Ms. Kim? Thank you. All right, Mr. Morong, we're going to skip the planning zone and report for now and go to our public hearing. We're a couple of minutes behind.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Leave no trace. Yes, sir, please.
All right. Commissioners, good morning. This is one of three public hearings this morning. The first public hearing is captioning ordinance of Franklin County, Florida, amending ordinance 2014-1, which is your current leave no trace ordinance for the purpose of including the public beach at Carebell Beach and three public beaches at Alligator Point and Bald Point, reconfirming ordinance 2014-1 except as amended, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Before we proceed, does the board have any questions for me? If not, if there's no board questions, then Dr. Mr. Morong, he had a commentary this morning, but he's...
I can blend that in.
He's out there.
I didn't know if the board wanted to go directly to public comment or do you want to, now that you're in a formal setting, have the conversation that Mr. Morong started this morning concerning your personnel limitations with your Parks and Rec Department before you were informed this morning that you're down, what, two or three employees in Parks and Rec already?
I think it'd be good to go ahead and receive public comment if there are any. That way they won't feel like we don't care what they have to say. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, public comment has to occur regardless. I just didn't know what order the board wanted to proceed.
Right, so I guess now we'll call for public comment. This is not something you had to fill out a speaker card for. This is a public hearing. If anyone's wanting to publicly discuss this issue, now is your time. No one here. Mr. Morong, will you see if anybody on Zoom wishes to comment?
Does anyone in Zoom would like to comment on this matter? The chairman's asking for, this is your time. We ask that you raise your hand. If you're on your phone, use the raise hand feature. If you'd like to comment on this matter, which is star nine. One we're asked, the caller's online, would you like to comment on this public hearing? No need to fill out a speaker card. Raise your hand. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
I called for public comment a couple of minutes ago. Now is your time. We usually don't go back, so please come forward.
Make sure this is referring to the public hearing, to this particular.
Yeah, this is for the leave no trace.
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Michelle Darple and I am the director of our Alligator Point Sea Turtle Patrol. I'm also the permit holder for FWC's Marine Turtle Permit Number 151. So I'd like to speak up this morning in favor of adding the Alligator Point beaches to the leave no trace ordinance. I'd also like to commend the county board of commissioners for being so progressive to even have this ordinance. As sea turtle patrollers and advocates for sea turtle conservation, this makes our job infinitely easier and we appreciate that so very much. I also wanted to ask if you all have any questions. It was pointed out to me that in previous meetings, some of you had questions about what sea turtle patrolers do, that kind of thing. So that's why I'm here this morning and just basically to show my support and see if I can answer any questions for you. I was the one that initially sort of brought this to the attention of the board. I emailed all of you last spring and then our Commissioner Bolt has supported this and I think made it official to bring it before the Board of County Commissioners, so.
As you patrol for the sea turtles and all, are you seeing a lot of stuff left on the beach?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. My patrolers, and just so you know what is involved to do this, these people are very dedicated. Like I said, I am the permit holder for Marine Turtle Permit 151. I am allowed to have 24 permitted volunteers. These people go through training that is issued by FWC every single year. They get up every morning at dawn and we patrol the entire length of beaches on Alligator Point. And what we're looking for is the sea turtle crawls. And now that's all they're required to do. What they do is pick up bags and bags of trash, tag cabanas, chairs that are left on the beach overnight. They carry shovels with them to fill in holes, holes that are so big that a person could fall in and be injured. We have just trash, lots of things left on the beach. And so having this ordinance, you know, we don't have any authority as sea turtle patrollers. We just ask people to, you know, be thoughtful and take care of our environment. And that means also providing a safe place for sea turtles to nest. So having this ordinance and being able to say, you know, this is something we're asking you to do, but also during nesting season, this is an ordinance that the county has put into law. So we see a lot of it. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, commissioners?
May I ask one thing? I noticed in the ordinance that you were, that it had the word "public beaches." I'm aware, and actually I'm a homeowner on the section of the beach at Alligator Point that is considered private beach. I was wondering if we might consider amending it to just say "the beaches" of Alligator Point.
The county has no authority on your private property. So the county, even if we do pass it, we can't send our employees on people's private property to obtain anything. That's why it's worded that way, I believe. Correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
That's the limitation.
So that couldn't fall under like different examples of like, you know, the leash ordinance or the fact that like, you know, even if it's private property, we can't set off fireworks or, you know, things like that? So we couldn't encompass that under the same kind of authority?
I don't think it is because fireworks are something that's going off. This is something that somebody's placing on their property. I think. I could be wrong.
And Mr. Chairman, the leash law only applies to the public beaches as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Lyra E. Rath and I've been a resident of Alligator Point. I'm a full-time resident of Alligator Point and a voter in Franklin County. And I sincerely ask all of the commissioners to support this ordinance. I'm also a turtle patroller. I've been doing that for three years. But even before that, I walked the beach every morning with my neighbor. And we collect bag after bag of debris. And we really, truly need some sort of enforcement currently in trying to deal with the debris problem on our beaches along Alligator Point. Not to mention including the health and the welfare of our turtles. I'm also an Audubon member and we have the consideration of all the nesting birds that come to our point. We're a primary nesting area along our coast for plovers and other endangered birds. So this is a truly important issue for all of our flora and fauna that we have in this beautiful coast that we live in. And I also would ask if I have the time, but speaking of debris, is that on the east end of the point, we have been dealing with very large portions of, it looked like some ship's stainless steel commercial kitchen that washed up along the beach and we have not been able to get anyone to help us. We've cut, and I'm, I'm not sure the name. I was looking through my phone of the name of the person that we contacted in the county and asked them for assistance. And they did go and look at it. I sent pictures and GPS. But we still have these two major, as big almost, one half the size of this pew stainless steel commercial kitchen that washed up on the beach. But that's just one example of the types of debris that we get, that nature brings us. And we don't have any, any method of dealing with it or any help in dealing with it. So I truly, truly appreciate your attention and your hard work. And if you would please consider including us and voting yes on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else?
Good morning. John Berry, Mr. Chairman, 1389 Alligator Drive. I didn't have any intention of coming up here, but being I'm a turtle patroller and have been for several years, I would hope all of you would support this ordinance. There is numerous occasions that I have been out on that beach early in the morning. There are huge holes. There are tents. There are sleeping bags. There are, you name it, and we'll have it. We stack, tag them and we stack them. But many times it doesn't do us any good because we'll come back the next day and they're still there. So I live on one of those private beaches, but I'm in favor of having the leave no trace ordinance in place. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, soon we're done with public comment.
I'd like to bring Mr. Davis up now.
Okay, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
I know you have to get to your doctor's appointment, but...
Thank you, thank you.
How would you, on St. George and other places where we have the no trace, do you go down on the beach with a trailer and pick these tents, chairs? How do we get that stuff off the beach?
We use golf cart.
Golf cart?
Oh, I'm sorry, gator.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, my question is, is do we have access to the beach on Alligator Point to be able to do that? Or how would you go down and pick this stuff up?
We have one access that I'm aware of and that will only take us so far with the, all the erosion, the private property. So, you know, we can only get so much of it.
That was my question. Why I asked you, stick around because I'm not familiar with the accesses down there and how this, if you implement this ordinance, how does it work? So if you don't have access to it, then you would have to have employees walk down the beach and drag the stuff back up? I mean, how would it work?
Yes.
That's it?
That's it. I mean, they will have to, I mean, it's, yes, a large stretch of beach you will have to. I mean, I don't know how, what's the exact number. But like I told you earlier, just that one access and you go from maybe the backwater to the backwalls, about as far as we can get before we run into problem.
As far along the shore you're talking about?
Yes.
So basically you have to go to an access point, beach access point, walk down that access point, take care of that one little piece of beach, come back and go down to the next public access. Because basically where there's public access, that's where the public beach is. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And you're shorthanded, so how can you, how will you handle this should the board pass this? Implement this leave no trace down there?
Well, you're talking about additional staff. I hope if it did pass.
So you are going to try to rehire the staff that you're now?
Yeah, even with that, Commissioner, we were running shorthand. And also that's way to the other end of the county. I don't want to leave nobody out. But for the amount of debris that I know of, I never heard of any such large amount. But for the amount that I know of, that's a lot. You're talking about getting up 5:00 o'clock in the morning to go down to the police to be, the little bit that you can. And if you access, you're going on private property. If you remember, we had a couple of beach accesses that I guess are easement. When coming to find out, the easement was kind of on private property. Yeah.
That's the one question I had.
The only thing that I have thought about the whole time we've been considering this, and it is fundamentally different. So the way things are set up, if you start talking about, say for instance, my district on St. George Island, 12th to 12th is considered public beach. That the whole thing is considered public beach. Yes, there's private property, but there's a certain amount there that's still public beach. So it does allow not only that you and your staff can access it, but you're not having to make sure that you've not certainly crossed over to private or it doesn't seem to be as, maybe as difficult as it might be at Alligator Point to do. Because we have had problems, as the commissioner brought up, since I've been on this board, where we have a public, what we think is a public access easement and it's part of some private property. Because we can't get on private property. That's what I'm understanding with all this stuff. We cannot do that. And, you know, I support the turtle patrol, support everything about it. We have it in place already. I just don't know how we're going to be able to do it on Alligator Point and be efficient at it. Because we're going to go from not doing it at all to only doing it in sections. Well, there's no guarantee that people are going to leave their tent in the section you can clean. I see that as being a problem. So it's still going to be the way it currently is. So, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but I see that being an issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My thing is this. I don't believe in that section. We can't do it for all. All of the public beach. We can't go on private. But it wouldn't be fair to go in there if we can't get all of it. Do that part and leave the other people undone. A situation like this. When you want more done, you got to pay for it. You want your taxes down, we kept them down. Week later, next day they come in. They want more work. A man already losing people because, I heard him say they lost people because of paper. They got a better job paying more money. If you want it, you got to pay for it. That's the beach. Stuff going wash up out the Gulf of Mexico. It's going, we can't, we have no control over that. That stuff they talking about on the thing, it might have came from that, flowed up way of three or four years ago or whenever it flowed. You never know until you get a number or something and try to look back. And don't tell them where it comes from. A ship could have sunk, boat could have sunk. You never know until you get some kind of number there and try to trace it. But anytime you, when you want work done, it's going to cost. It's going to cost. And I don't see, if you, from what I've heard, if you got people walking that beach every morning and you say they pick up paper, they take showers with them, they do this, they do that. There's no way it can be that much trash down there. There's no way left. Ain't no way. I mean, I can see if some be, you have my boat. If you got 30 people walking the beach, it can't be that much trash left. I don't see it. I've worked for it all my life.
I think part of the problem, Commissioner, might be the fact that we only have so much public access. So that's where we're putting, if we do have trash receptacles, that's where they are. They're not maybe where somebody's at the beach, going to the beach. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, I see that, that...
But it's not going to ever, all we can do is, is, is the public park. It's still going to be trash on the private. Some way it's going, we can't do, we still can't touch the public. That's all we allowed, that's all we allowed to go, right? Your people can't go in the private sector.
That's correct.
So if you got public beach here, private, public, private.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You know, it's very difficult to try to put in an ordinance for trying to control human behavior. Trying to control personal responsibility, trying to control personal integrity. It's just, it's a moving target, and there's an ordinance for every impaired human behavior known to man. It's difficult to develop an ordinance for people who just unthinkingly decide that, oh, my beach is your beach, and what's yours is mine, and I'll leave everything I want to right here. It's very difficult. However, also, this ordinance currently, the way, our beaches do not have a consistency of ordinances. It's now checkerboard here. We have stuff at St. George Island, but we don't have an ordinance related to Alligator Point. My thought in this entire process is that we need consistency of all of our public beaches across the entire seventy mile peninsula of this county. And perhaps we need to pass this ordinance, I think, and then start working to backfill it later with personnel and work toward the budget process, got to pay for it down the line. But we've gotten an ordinance at least that has some teeth in it on a consistent basis across the entire county. So, I support the ordinance. That's why I brought it up to begin with.
With all due respect, Commissioner, I think it's a little bit backwards to adopt the ordinance and then worry about the employees, because if we adopt it, the citizens are going to be waiting for us to take action right then.
Well, I think there are some ordinances that we have in the county that are, if you will, somewhat standby ordinances. There's a very strong intention that they be implemented, but there are a lot of ordinances that we have that don't have the full personnel to implement them as well. This may be one of them, but I think that it's there as a place marker for our intention. We don't necessarily have to be able to fill the employee spot right now to be able to do that, but it's there for us to start budget planning, say, for next fiscal year. I'd say we get the intention and the ordinance is consistently in place right now. Fill it in later and respect your staff and your personnel as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one thing we've always heard, and residents from Alligator Point have said this here over and over again, Alligator Point Beach is different from St. George Island Beach and should be treated differently. And I think this is one of the prime examples that show it's... What you want to apply, the ways applied on St. George Island Beach will not work on Alligator Point. And I, in all respect, Commissioner, both, I think what we should do, if we're going to do something this way, is develop an ordinance that applies specifically to Alligator Point, that would help Alligator Point. I mean...
Yeah, I think customized ordinances are good, and I just, the intention's what I want to see consistent.
Yeah, what you want is to get a positive effect of whatever ordinance you put out there.
Sure.
This board has said over and over again, why do we have laws in the books if we don't enforce them? And I think that will come back to haunt us if this is the way we approach it today. I mean, if we're saying, pass an ordinance, we'll figure it out later, that's exactly what we've been criticized for, for doing in the past. And I do think Alligator Point, and I'm hearing a lot about debris and trash, but attorney, the Leave No Trace is more about equipment that people left out, less about debris and trash, correct? Or did I misunderstand the ordinance?
No, well, it's about fourteen pages long. I don't have it memorized.
Oh, okay.
Generally speaking, it's for people that are leaving their tents and their chairs and digging holes in the beach, things that would interfere with the turtles coming up onto the beach and nesting. It's not necessarily an anti-litter ordinance. It's a personal property being left, which is not supposed to be left on a public beach.
There is. And so, that's, I'm hearing trash, again, I think it needs a more specific ordinance to deal with Alligator Point. It's, you know, it's... I mean, there's a lot of challenges that we have to deal with, and I think we need to deal with them, not just throw something at it and hope it just, it works out for the best.
If we was to enact this ordinance, how is he supposed to tell the difference? How does Parks and Rec tell the difference in private property and what's public beach? Are we going to have to have it surveyed and have markers put out there so the employees know, you know, you can't go across this line, or you can't go across... Just as Chairman said, St. George Island is 12th Street to 12th Street. So, you got a whole stretch of beach there that you got to patrol and clean up and remove unwanted stuff to keep out of, you know, keep the turtles from getting tangled up. How is Parks and Rec going to determine what's private beach and what's public beach? You can't just say, go down there and get this stuff. You don't know, they don't know where they at. I wouldn't know if I walked on the beach where I was at, as far as private and public. So, how's he supposed to, I mean, there's just...
I hear that.
What are we going to do? Have our public accesses and our beaches surveyed? And then put markers down or something so Parks and Rec employees would know where they're at?
Where not to go, was more important. I hear you.
And the other thing was, what I was asking Mr. Davis, is do we have public access where we can go down on there? But you can't stroll across people's public beach, on a private beach, to get to the public park? Because it's private. You can't go across people's private property to access public property, so how does he get down there to get the stuff up? Do you get four, five employees to go down there and drag this stuff off the beach every day? I mean... So, getting back to another comment about being efficient in what we're doing, then I just don't know how it all works.
And I know one more question that will be posed to me, if not to the board, is that if we pass the ordinance, are we then authorizing the beach patrol to tag something and they're tagging it on behalf of the county? I know the answer is no, but that question is going to be posed, so I'm like, let's put it out there right now and discuss it. We can't, they're not an agent of the county, so even if they tag something, it's still, they're not enforcing the ordinance. So, I kind of wanted to make that clear to the board and to the public, this is my opinion, ask Attorney Schuler, you know, what he thinks, so we can discuss that also.
No, because we've had that discussion, because we already have in the works and boards. It's the same way in other sections of the county. They're not agents of the county, they're not, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's a good and valuable services being done, but it's not... I don't know if you can translate it that way.
I'm not against doing it for Alligator Point, I'm just saying I think we need to be more specific and refined in the way we approach this situation. It needs to be done.
But it sounds like we, from the public's point of view, it sounds like we're looking for a way not to do it. That's not the case.
That's not the case.
The case is, it's got to be done and done proper and done the right way. And I don't think we have that laid out here, just as I was saying a while ago, how's his employees supposed to know if they're on a piece of private beach or they're on a public beach? Is it surveyed? Is it marked out? Is it to let the employees know? You can't go over there and get those people's stuff, because that's, that's the people that lives up there in that house. That's their stuff on their private beach. And you get into all of that about, you know, taking my stuff off of my private beach, and you want authorized to do that. I mean, how does, how does he direct his employees and how does all this work? It's not that I'm here trying to advocate why not to do it. But to enact the ordinance and not have the stuff in place, as Mr. Davis said, without having the rules of the ballgame laid out, you just can't enact an ordinance and say, do it, when it's going to take a specific ordinance for Alligator Point, because we just don't have a stretch of beach there, and that's the only stretch of beach we patrol, or the only stretch of beach that the ordinance applies to. We're talking about a little strip here and a little strip down yonder, and... I mean, I don't know what's private and public down there. I'm just going by what's being told to me, you know what I'm saying? I don't know how many, how many public accesses we actually have. It's three or four, isn't it? Something like that?
Three, that's correct.
And then the rest of it's private beach, so how does he direct his employees? I mean, I don't see how it all fits together and how it works.
Are you, were there any questions for Mr. Davis? Go ahead, sir.
What will it take? You got the staff to do this? Okay.
Oh, sure.
What will it take for you to get a staff to do what we're talking about?
That district is not going to be dedicating another man by itself.
That going to take care of both of them?
And when I say man, I just, male or female, I just, an employee.
That going to take care of both of them? You got two beaches?
No, sir. Again, like, when you're enforcing the Leave No Trace, you out there trying to catch these people actually leaving it, or they violating, or they they're going by the ordinance, what the ordinance says. Take your tents at the, in the use to the dunes. Or in Alligator Point, I guess it will be up to the banks somewhere. I don't know where they would put it at, but if they don't do that, then that's when we tag the items. So, again, you talking about sending a man to Alligator Point five o'clock in the morning, five-thirty, trying to catch this, because they left it overnight. You've got to be out there early to see if it's there. And then that means they put the eight hours in, they knocking off about one o'clock probably, somewhere up in there, and that's all they good for.
So, that's two men?
That, that's right, because you don't want one man out there.
I mean, you got, well, you got two beaches.
By himself at that time of morning.
And we got two beaches on there?
Yes, Caribou Beach too.
Caribou Beach, what do you got?
They probably could work both of them. I mean, it'd be closed, but yes.
They can work, one man can work both of them?
But it'll be two, again, I correct that, because you, that time of morning, you don't want a person out there by themselves.
And he can work both beaches? Two people can work both beaches?
No, no.
Four people?
Yeah, exactly.
So, we're going to need four people?
Yeah, we already have. Well, with minus one now, we're working the St. George Island right along with China, do everything else in that department.
Ms. Griffin?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I really ain't never been on that beach. I mean, what they talking about, what you talking about? So...
Again, some of them items that was mentioned also that take a piece of equipment, and we went through that with Commissioner Bolt, trying to remove some of them large items.
Gulf shores.
Yeah.
I ain't talking about that, I'm talking about we can't do... I guess you can't do once, we, ain't no way, because you got the... Some people don't want you on their property. I don't care how many orders we pay. We go, we go down there, so how we going to know how to spot you? Some people going to tell us to get off their property. That's automatic. You ain't got no business on here, that's my problem. How do we spot you?
I'm willing to go down and meet with some of the residents. They can show me a better way, like as Commissioner was saying, that, you know, trying to find a solution to fix the problem, but as it stands right now, I just don't see how we could do it. Again, I'm willing to go down and meet with them and report back to the board.
The ones who say they up, they got to put it on people, or they can get mad and say, I ain't told you. Okay.
What, what, just, Mr. Chairman, just throwing this out there, what if you had volunteers to help one man?
I'm sure that would help.
Well, I mean, that's something, you talking about going down and talking to them, see if they ain't some volunteers down there that's willing to help go in, but you have to, somebody from the county has to be there to be an authorized agent acting on behalf of the county. But volunteers could help that particular person. Ms. Schuler, is that possible or not possible?
I would want to think about that a little bit further. We don't have that process in place anywhere else in the county. I'm not going to prejudge, say it can't be done, Commissioner. I just don't think that it's being done currently on the island. I mean, I don't get involved with the day-to-day. I mean, we all have volunteers helping with the Leave No Trace on the island?
Not with the pickup of debris, no, sir.
But they have access with a piece of equipment that they pull down there and throw these items on a trailer, and they pull it. He's not going to have that down at Alligator Point, because you can't go across them private beaches.
Correct.
But trying to find a solution...
Hold on, when we get past the board discussion, you will be recognized. Thank you. Go ahead.
Got it.
I'll share something to say.
I'm trying to find a way to make it work, that's all I'm saying.
I understand that.
If volunteers don't work, it don't work, but I mean...
And that's the thing, and I get the, what's going on in the discussion, so I can tell you this. This is a simple illustration, but it applies. I have three children. I treat them equally, but I cannot treat them the same. They're not the same. That's the way it is with this ordinance. The way it's written up, none of these areas are the same. Caribou Beach also has private beaches. McKissick Beach. You go down there, I promise you, they will let you know that they think that's their beach. We've had that discussion numerous times here at this board. We've also had the discussion numerous times about Alligator Point. With parking, with other issues, they don't want people down there. When we start doing stuff like Leave No Trace, it's going to be more of a problem, and if we did have the staff to cover it, we're going to have more of our people that are going to be berated, belittled, and mistreated, and we're trying to do our best to try to retain people. I don't see how that's going to help us. Again, it's not saying that it's not valid to do stuff to help with sea turtles. I get all that, and I understand that, and I'm for it, if we had a way to implement it. There's so much of this beach that is private, it is not public. That's going to be a problem for us to undertake. People are not going to leave their stuff for Leave No Trace where our public access is. They might do that some, but by and large, most of this, this pins discussed today is probably being left on private property. That's going to cause us a problem. Ms. Griffiths, you raise your hand?
Yes, is Leave No Trace, is the ordinance actually enforced year-round, or is it strictly seasonal?
Seasonal.
Okay. And could, could actually any sort of, you know, employee workforce actually be done with maybe temporary or part-time employees during the season?
Yeah, that will work.
Yeah.
Said from workforce?
Yeah.
Well, temporary, part-time, hourly employees.
Oh, not specifically workforce, like team workforce?
No, not specifically workforce, but it could be a part-time position which would actually reduce the cost.
That's the same, that was the same concept we're talking about when Commissioner Ward wanted the ditches cleaned, to hire summertime, part-time help, you know, but...
That's a good compromise.
Don't take this in a negative way. I didn't see it in the budget.
I ain't seen it, I ain't seen neither. I mean, you want the people the mood they stuff. They go and pay thousands of dollars, go on vacation. Can't, can't put it over there overnight. Want the beach cleaned for a damn turtle? Uh-uh, I ain't bought no.
Are we done with any questions for Mr. Davis?
Yeah, he needs to go.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you would like to... We weren't trying to ignore you at all. I was just, we were during Commissioner comments.
And as she approached the podium, sir, since then, someone has raised their hand on Zoom also.
I just mentioned to Mr. Davis, and I want to say to, I hope he can hear me as he leaves, but I have had to call him a few times, and he has been nothing but supportive and helpful. I have our beach on Alligator Point, the entire peninsula divided into sections. Those are our patrol routes. I am well aware of where the private and public beaches are. I will work with him to make sure that this happens, and it is a lot on the public beaches. The private citizens as a whole are more aware and they're more invested. They want stuff off the beach. They don't want to see things overnight, so it primarily is rentals that are on public stretches of beach. I, like I said, I will work with him. We can figure out, you know, I can make sure that he knows exactly where the private and public beaches are. There are two public beach accesses that are recognized by the county. You all have your signs at the public beach accesses. So, it would be very easy for him to drive a golf cart
The gator?
with gator
Yes, ma'am.
down one and up another, or, we will figure it out, I assure you, yes.
I think that's what he was asking for, was instead of us passing an ordinance today and not having a clear plan
Sure.
to defer that. I think that's what...
Well, and with anything new, there are going to be growing pains, but just know that we're not just asking you to blindly adopt this, and then we're not going to be part of the solution. I love your idea with part-time, you know, we will, we just need some help and support. And we are recognized through the state of Florida and by FWC as a primary nesting And we are recognized through the state of, of Florida and by FWC as a primary nesting beach. We are actually the last nesting beach, um, before the Big Bend until you get to Clearwater. So we're a very important, um, nesting area, and, um, we would really, really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Now, after hearing him talk, are there any other questions that I could help with as far as related to sea turtle patrol, or?
I guess not.
Okay, thank you. I, I will work with him, I assure you, and we can figure something out if you will adopt this. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioners, my name's Gary Darple, and I'm a permanent resident, have been of Alligator Point for six years, and I am on one of the, uh, private beaches. It's delineated, uh, as Mr. Shuler pointed out, uh, Peninsular Point is where it starts private. There are already signs there on private property that delineate that as a private beach. So from the first, there's three walkovers, and they all go perpendicular to the Gulf. He can go down any one of those with a gator and a trailer, and when he gets to the third one, there's the signs right there that say Peninsular Point, private beaches. So he knows right there, I mean, it's there. So it's pretty well delineated, and like Michelle said, we would be more than happy to meet with Fonda and try to come up to a solution for you guys. So this isn't all on you, we wanna be invested in it also, and we would really like to help, you know, get this. As far as the leave no trace, and I understand it's seasonal, I know there's been a lot said about the trash, and there is a lot of trash. Fonda and his crew comes, I think, every Friday with a trailer and fills up the cans. There's only two cans. Well, they have twenty-five people with garbage bags full that they never see at the walkover. It's put in our own private trash and put out, you know, to the trash on that day. There's also holes that are the size of two of these tables put together that these, the kids make down there, and then they build a fire inside of it, and they leave. We can't do anything about it. You call the sheriff, and by the time they get there, an hour passes, and they're already gone. Or they say, well, they can't do anything because it's sunset. It's not sunset yet. Well, how are you gonna fill in a ten-foot diameter hole by sunset, and then hold people accountable that have already left? So I guess what I'm saying is, the leave no trace ordinance puts up a boundary for people and a guideline to follow by. There's several that the county has, um, that you could point out and look at and say, well, they don't wanna, like the parking issue. You guys were great, we got the boulders put up, it eliminated probably eighty percent of it. And the other twenty, they're still parking on private property, and we don't even call the sheriff, because they don't have the manpower to come out there and take care of it.
Thank you, can you please keep it what we're talking about now, though?
Yes.
We are doing something out of the ordinary.
Yes.
Usually when we get past public comments, that's the end of it.
And I appreciate that, so the leave no trace back to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Usually when we get past public comments, that's the end of back and forth between.
Yes.
So please keep it what we're talking about.
Yeah, the leave no trace ordinance.
Yes.
So that was my point, the, the holes, the fires, everything like that, it's not just the trash.
Right.
So anything we can do to help and volunteer, uh, meet with Fonda, bring him down, I'll be more than happy, uh, you all know how to get a home, and at least Bert does, and I'll be more than happy to help with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Can we allow, allow Ms. Susan McCann?
Yes.
Guess that, that'll wrap that up. Ms. McCann, I've asked you to unmute, okay, she's unmuted, good, good morning?
Good morning, it's barely morning, and I'll be brief. Um, I'm multitasking, I'm at work, and I have my dog who has a vet appointment, so she's probably gonna bark, and I apologize. I just wanted to put in, um, a plug for including Carabel Beach in, um, leave no trace. We, I personally, and I know many others, would like to see our beaches clean, flat, and dark throughout the county. I took it upon myself a few weeks ago, when there were visitors, and chatted with them, and, um, I wanna put in a plug for education. These folks were unaware of what, if any, uh, ordinances existed. One guy in particular, he said, you know, I went online, and I looked, and I asked people, and nobody could really tell me whether we could put our tent up and leave it up. They were all very pleasant, and more than willing to comply with any future leave no trace, um, ordinance. So, um, there are tents left up overnight on Carabel Beach, primarily very close to the public beach area. Um, it's primarily the folks that are staying at the RV park, um, that do that. So I think some education would go a long way towards resolving that. I pick up trash almost every day that I'm there, I'm happy to do it. That's the least I can do, um, as payment for having such a beautiful stretch of beach to walk on every day. But I do hope that Carabel Beach is included. Large holes are dug and left, and I fill in holes as best I can. But I would encourage the county to consider having consistent countywide measures, um, for all of our beautiful beaches. Thank you for your time.
Well, that's it. Pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, we, we discussed this, um, very lengthy, uh, you know, I, I'm all for having this, I'm all for the turtles, I'm all for having this. It is seasonal, Aaron, thank you for bringing that up, because I was actually gonna bring that up about the, this, the, um, however many times a year. I do see, though, that this is posing a lot of questions, a lot of unknowns. Um, my position on this is, I, I wanna table this. I don't want to leave the people behind. We do need to address this, there's no doubt about it. I do agree that everybody's, not all beaches in Franklin County are the same, and so they, they need certain rules. I would like to, for the people of Alligator Point, to meet with Mr. Davis and whoever else, to try to come up with a solution and a plan for, to maybe redo or revisit an ordinance in the future, to, to specify what's best for Alligator Point Beach, what's best for Carabel Beach. We already have the island included. And if we, if it takes, you know, additional staff that's seasonal, I know, I mentioned before, having volunteers help out, and that was a questionable thing. But I think right now, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be prudent of us to do this with it, with so many unknowns and, and uncertainties, personally. So I, I, I make a motion to table this with the direction of us working together with the people of each beach area to come up with a, a solution.
So we have a motion to table by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to one, Jessica. Right?
Mr. Chairman, may I move on with the second public hearing?
Actually, can we take a five-minute recess first?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have this for an hour.
Hi, I'm Carol Landis. I'm a professional Realtor, in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in two thousand and two, it was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old, in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island, or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand in surf.
Well, Kara, to me, is much more than an agent, she's become a friend. And since we bought the house, we've needed work done, and she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth and value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico, with its white sand beaches and blue sky, has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines, to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often, our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house, and the, the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Kara.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at eight five zero, six five three, seven seven five three.
Fisherman's Choice Bait and Tackle has all you need for your day of fishing. They have fresh and saltwater bait, an unmatched selection of mirror lures, and a wide selection of Berkeley gulp, plus fresh and live bait, and all the rigs and tackle you need for a great day of fishing, including brands like Penn and Shimano. They are also the only bait and tackle shop in Franklin County where you can get a fishing license. And don't miss their wide selection of marine supplies, coolers, and more. Fisherman's Choice is located at three thirty, Highway ninety-eight, in East Point. Our beautiful piece of paradise, please make sure you visit our local shops, restaurants, galleries, and take some time to experience something different, and take a fishing trip or tour with one of our experience guides. Our neighbors and their businesses are the heartbeat of our community. Thank you for visiting, and remember to shop local, eat local, and fish local. This message is brought to you by the Apalachicola Bay Chamber of Commerce.
Do you need a vacation? A vacation that you can reconnect with the ones you love? Spend time relaxing, not rushing. Visit Florida's forgotten coast, the Florida you remember.
We understand that managing a healthy lifestyle while balancing life's other demands can be challenging at times. So the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including, but not limited to, COVID-nineteen vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity. Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, COPD, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups.
To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit Franklin dot Florida Health dot gov, or call eight five zero, six five three, two one one one.
Beaches, yeah, we've got that. Fresh seafood, got that too. Historical landmarks, you bet. Fishing, oh yeah. But what do we have the others don't? This. Peace. Quiet. And relaxation. Florida's forgotten coast, the Florida you remember.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We're going to our next public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is a public hearing for the board to consider an ordinance repealing section two of ordinance ninety-two dash ten, that no electrical wiring smaller than twelve gauge may be installed, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Just as background information, in ninety-two, the board passed an ordinance, as I just described, stating that no gate, no electric wire smaller than twelve gauge may be installed in Franklin County. If you recall, your, uh, building administrator came to the board a couple of months ago and said that the current Florida building code, in fact, allows some applications which would allow wire smaller than twelve gauge to be installed. And so he had recommended to the board that you consider adopting this ordinance, repealing the provision of, of ordinance ninety-two dash ten, that no electric wiring smaller than twelve gauge can be installed in Franklin County. If the board approves this ordinance as drafted, the net effect would be that your local, uh, building code would just be consistent with the Florida building code, as opposed to having a special enhanced requirement, uh, that limits wire, electrical wiring to twelve gauge. And if the board has no questions for me, it would be appropriate at this time to take public comment.
Any questions for Attorney Shuler, Commissioners? All right, this time I will call for public comment. If there's one in the room that wishes to make a comment publicly about this item, this is your time to speak. Okay? No one in the room sent for anybody on Zoom, sir?
Anyone attended virtually via Zoom, if you'd like to speak in this matter, this is your chance, and your only chance to speak on this item. You do that by using the rant, I'm sorry, the rate. You do that by using the raise hand feature on your device. One more ask, if anyone would like to speak on this. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
End of discussion by the board.
Just real quick, Mr. Patterson, I ask you a question. As we allow smaller wiring, it comes to me that why we adopted 92.10 to begin with, nothing smaller than a 12 gauge wire. So the next would be 14. That smaller wire will easily get hotter if put in certain applications. Correct?
Correct.
And I'm wondering if they didn't adopt this 92.10 as it relates to, all we have here is volunteer fire departments trying to prevent fires and overheating causing fires. Although they allow it in state, is that across the whole state regardless if it's rural or urban areas?
That's National Electric Code, which is what the Florida building code.
So they haven't seen an increase in fires by using a smaller wire? That's my only question.
With modern construction, you're limited to a 15 amp breaker. You're also on, all of your 110 circuits are arc fault, so.
So if you use a smaller wire, then you're limited as to matter amperage that you can put through that breaker, which prevents the fires that I'm speaking of?
Correct.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Yep.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Or discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
This just pertaining to the 110, not the 220, right?
That's right. So moved.
Motion to approve adoption of this ordinance or repealing this ordinance by Commissioner Parrish II by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. So let's move on to the next one.
All right. Mr. Chairman, may I proceed?
Yep.
All right. Commissioners, this is your third and final public hearing. The caption of the ordinance is an ordinance amending Ordinance 93-5 by deleting all of Section 1.1 Subsection 0, which provides for certain specialty contractors, deleting Section 13, Subparagraph M through X, specialty contractors, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Again, in 1993, the board created a specialty contractor definition, which is located in Section 1.1 Subsection 0. And then the board also created Section 13, Paragraphs M through X of Ordinance 93-5, which created a number of specialty contractor subcategories. And just for the record, I will read them off very briefly. Framing contractor, masonry contractor, tile contractor, cement concrete contractor, painting contractor, insulating contractor, vinyl siding contractor, piling installation, wood/concrete, trim carpentry contractor, drywall contractor, stucco contractor, and marine contractor. Those are the specialty licenses that will be eliminated. To the extent that anyone has a specialty license in those categories now, they will be allowed to lapse, and they will not be renewed when they lapse. And these are annual licenses, as I understand it, except as provided herein. The Ordinance 93-5 shall remain in full force and effect. And if the board has no questions for me, it would be appropriate at this time to take public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question. This ordinance provides for a grandfathering out-of-county clause. Can you elaborate on that?
No, ma'am. There was an original iteration that there was a discussion to have grandfathering. I'm not quite sure.
On the agenda, there was some language that.
On the agenda, but it was not advertised for grandfathering.
It was deleted after I had transferred it. So two of us are talking, I'm sorry, but that's what it means.
I just wanted to make sure that was the case. I didn't know if that was.
Commissioner, thank you. And Mr. Patterson did bring the agenda item to my attention, but it was not advertised that way, so I did not address that issue. So thank you for bringing that up. But just to clarify for the record, this ordinance is not grandfathering anyone. That is a subject matter that may be brought back to the board by Mr. Patterson at a future date.
If I could, Steve, tell me, where should people strike on the, just so we have it on the records, the language starting where? It starts with providing that no out-of-county residents, that where we should strike?
Well, the ordinance, Mr. Chairman, if I can, the ordinance addresses that you will be deleting Section 1.1 Subsection 0.
Okay.
And then you will also be deleting Subparagraphs M through X on Section 13 of the Ordinance 93-5.
Good. I want to make sure it's on the record.
Yes.
Where the language that was in here that shouldn't have been in here is striking. Okay.
Any additional questions for Attorney General for the board?
The state?
Sir?
The state doing it?
Yes, it's.
I think actually the state asked us why we thought we were doing it, but go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Right. These licenses are not, the state doesn't recognize them. So if you use these licenses, the state is not, you know, if they come up and you're using one of these licenses from the county, they don't recognize it, so you're not licensed.
Mr. Chairman, can they fine you for that?
They sure can.
So it's really saving and helping out.
Right. So when somebody has their business and they have licensed and insured, and it says construction, if it's got construction in the name and it says licensed and insured, the state can come and fine them for not having their license number, which we don't have a license number with these licenses, so. And since they don't have a state license, they get fined for that. Every business card is a separate fine. I mean, they can go after them pretty hard if they want to.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we can call public comment yet or not.
We have not.
But say somebody lays tile for a living. How are they supposed to do that if they don't have?
They would work for the homeowner or the contractor. They're not required to have a license to do that by the state, so.
But people have been telling me that if I don't have a contract and I can lay all this tile in, then people ain't got the payment. And I have no recourse because I don't have a contract. I know me and you discussed that they could work for the homeowner and get paid by the hour. And they're saying, well, if I do it and then I don't have a contract, I don't have no, I can't take them to court and get my money, in other words. Yeah, they bought, say the homeowner, whoever buys the material, but the guy doing the work has no recourse to get his money. These are questions that are being posed to me. And I look down this thing, I'm saying, there's a lot of people that paint that don't work for, you know, is not hired by the contractor to do this job. They've done it for the individual. I use tile for, you know, drywall. There's a lot of people come in after somebody's done this, and I did it when I built my house, as the owner doing it, you know, contracting stuff out. I got this guy to do my roof, put my roof, my shingles on. I did the drywall. I did concrete work to put the foundation down before I could put the floor joists and the walls up. What's to say I don't pay these people? I mean, these are the questions that I'm getting, Steve. It's not that I don't understand that the license is not recognized by the state and all that, but there are a lot of people in Franklin County that don't actually work for contractors. They do it on their own, and I've been getting pushed back when we discuss this issue and all these things, vinyl siding, another thing. I couldn't find anybody to do my vinyl siding, I had to do it myself. I ain't never put no vinyl siding up, but I had to learn how to do it because I couldn't get nobody to do it. But these are some of the things that people pose.
Right. You know, I checked with our neighboring counties, and none of them do any kind of a specialty license. They don't do a county specialty license. So you, I don't know how they work their contracts between the, you know, because I know that when you do flooring or cabinets or all, I know they do have a contract on those, but it's not.
Not recognized by the state.
The state's not, doesn't seem to be really hitting those guys hard. It's more in the framing and areas.
Yeah, and I know there's a lot of people that got framing crews too, you know, and.
And your concrete guys, they don't seem to mess with them. But it seems to be more framers that they go, that they're going after more.
The state you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. Commissioner, my question to follow from what you're saying, so I don't understand, if I have a contract with you to do something, how does the county issuing a license support?
Because you can't have a contract. If we cross all this out, you're not allowed to have a contract.
But then we have an agreement to work.
You don't have nothing, except I'm working for this homeowner for $20 an hour. If you don't collect your money at the end of every day, and you work a week, or two weeks, or three weeks before you collect your money, and they don't want to pay you, you don't have a contract.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Make very clear for the record, I'm only giving legal advice to the county commission. However, it is a fair comment to point out that these individuals can look to Chapter 713 Florida statutes that deals with liens, but they would need to talk to an attorney on what their remedies would be under Chapter 713. There are remedies available, but they would need to consult with their own attorney as to what those remedies are.
But we know, Mr. Sheriff, that liens are no good unless they sell their property or something, or intend on selling it, then they have to pay the lien off. But other than that, if they don't ever sell a place, the person don't get their money, is what I'm trying, this is what they're pointing out to me. I'm not into none of that. I don't do any of that for a living, but people are asking these questions.
Yeah, I hear you.
Well, let me ask a question. These people have been doing it for a while, a long time, under this. They're not going to be grandfather, can they be grandfathered in for state license?
The state won't be able to do that.
No, it don't. They can do it, Franklin County can do. Can that happen?
That's the problem.
If there's a state license for the activity, they could be if they meet the criteria. I mean, there's a test they have to take and.
Mr. Chairman, isn't it, you know, any of these specialty contractors, like for example, a framer, they could still come back and get this residential or building contractor license that is stated in this ordinance, correct?
They can still work as a framer without a county framing license. We're the only county around that has this, that has these county licenses like this. I checked with Gulf County, Waukulla County, neither of those have it. They have, Gulf County has an occupational license that covers everything, but the, I talked to Brad Bailey over there, he said their occupational license covers everything from house cleaners to lawn care and all that. And it specifically excludes people in the construction industry because they are supposed to work for contractors, or the homeowner who is the, a homeowner pulls a permit as a owner builder. So.
Mr. Chairman, I always thought that licenses assured competency in carrying out that particular trade. And I wonder when we exclude these licenses, are we not degradating the quality of outcome on these services like painting or cement or tile? I'm wondering where the quality control is when we go away with those licenses.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bolt, that same question was asked of me.
Yeah.
The same question that you just posed was asked of me too, along with all these other concerns. Well, who's looking over it? I said, well, son, the gentleman I was speaking with says, I said, well, it's up to the homeowner to make sure they hire somebody that knows what they're doing. You know, because they're the owner builder now, so they've assumed the responsibility quoted as the contractor, that it's their responsibility to make sure they know who they're hiring and make sure they know what they're doing. It's not, because the same question was asked of me, who's looking over this? And I don't know that the county really.
The county's always determined competency by, you had to submit four letters of recommendation that you were either a good painter or a good framer, and they could come from anybody.
That's right.
They didn't have to come from, you know, your aunt, your, I mean, whoever wrote you a letter, and the county took whatever four letters they got, and that's how the license was, so.
Well, the state telling us to do this because I hate to think about folding on something and putting the butt out of work.
It's not going to take anybody's job. I mean, it's not changing it. They still, anybody working now can continue what they're doing. We just don't have a county license over it.
And it's, Mr. Chairman, sorry, Commissioner Lockley, you were going to say something? Were you saying something, Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah, what I'm saying, all I'm saying is, some people make their living like this. I did mine when I was doing it. And jobs are limited, as we know in Franklin County. So if they tell us to do it, we ain't got no choice.
And Mr. Chairman, that's.
But if they ain't, I'm not going to stop these people from working. I ain't gonna mess with them. I don't like to mess with people. They feeding their family and they paying their bills, what they gonna do? Now, what happen if they go out there and do it after you resolve, you get rid of this, they still do it? Reason to get a code and folks, can you go out there and you tell them, okay, you can work?
No, because we don't, if he goes out there, if they're working without a license now, without a county license now, you can fine them. But if we do away with the county license, they can work just like they're working now. I mean, they can't pull permits. Only the homeowner or the state licensed contractor can pull permits. So these licenses don't allow these guys to pull permits.
Right.
So it's. So what you're doing, you're actually charging people out there for something, a piece of paper that's not worth anything, is how I see it, right? I'm talking to Steve. So Commissioner, you and I together can have a license to do whatever, you know, a specialty license, but the building department is not going to issue us a permit based on that license because it's not state, it's not a state certified license. And there's no quality control check, Commissioner Bolt, like what you're asking for, because again, you know, the permit is either pulled by the homeowner or the G C, the contractor, you know, at some point, they're the ones responsible for making sure of quality control, not the county. I mean, the inspections that Steve do is based on the billing code. I mean, some people could look at it as quality control, but it's state requirement. So I think what we're doing here is helping them, telling them, okay, so you're either going to work for a contractor or for the homeowner, you know, but you can work, we're not stopping you from working. A lot of people do that now, but know that they're not, I mean, if we give them a license, we're still not going to issue them a permit. So they're going to ask you tomorrow, oh, why did you guys give me this license? Why did you guys require this license if you're not going to give me a permit based on this county license? That's what's really going on, if we can get to the, kind of to the root of it.
Yeah, you just said something here. Steve is the quality control. You go in as a building official and make sure that the standard of building practice in all these categories is met, you or your staff. That would be, wouldn't that be a correct oversight?
Well, we make sure it's code. Quality is not. Yeah, quality's not always code. Quality is subjective and.
So code doesn't equal quality sometimes.
Not all the time.
Code is the minimum requirement. I did not know that.
I guess.
Some builders are good, some are bad.
I did not know that.
But they all perform to the code. You just get inferior product.
I guess eighty to eighty-five, ninety percent of the people who doing this stuff, if they gonna stay in it, they do a good job.
Yeah.
If they gonna, you know, if they really trying to make their living. Now, you got, and I've seen some, I've seen some of them do better than the ones who got the license.
I'll bet, I'll bet you have.
I have, but, you know, the sticky.
Everything we do is sticky.
Here's the thing, I see everybody's point, that they're all valid, but as Steve was saying, the fact of the matter remains, you can have somebody come in and try to get a framing contractor license. We're not going to recognize that. The state's not going to recognize, if this gets passed, we could say all day, okay, we're going to give you your framing contracting license for $50. They go out there and they start framing, the state comes in, sees that they're framing, they start framing, the state comes in, sees that they're framing, asks for their license, they give them the Franklin County license, and they say, well, this is no good.
Exactly.
We're going to not only fine you for working, we're also going to fine, could they potentially fine us for allowing the license? I mean, and then what's going to happen then? That framing contractor's going to come to us and say, well, you allowed me to get this license, is basically null and void from the state. So, I'm looking at it, and I know that's hypothetical, but the fact remains, it, this is Florida building code, it's the state. I see your point, Commissioner Lockley, but it's kind of the point where it's kind of, I mean, something that they're technically requiring us to do, essentially.
Well, they're...
Otherwise, people out there working might get fined, and then they might come blame the county for it. That's my take on it.
Well, some, something else to Commissioner Ward that's kind of interesting, so we did this thing in the last three or four years, where you can actually go onto our website and look at permits that are pulled. There's some of these locally licensed contractors that had their license for a decade or more, that have yet to pull a permit. So, how's that helping the county? You know, so there's, there's multiple sides to every coin. I think at the end of the day, we're doing stuff that we probably shouldn't have been doing to begin with, and we're just trying to correct it. Now, is that going to mean that everybody's going to be, you know, that we can cover and be a safety net for everything? No, it does not. But I don't think that was ever on the table today anyway. We can't make it work out for every homeowner and every contractor that's hired. We couldn't do that yesterday, we can't do it today, and we won't be able to do it tomorrow. So, I just want to make sure we recognize what we're talking about doing. We're talking about repealing something that we started doing as a county that we probably really had no business doing. There might have been a need for it at the time, but things change. And that anybody's staying in a business, you know, if, if you're going to do it, get whatever state license you need to do to do it. I mean, that, that's just part of it.
Or work under a contractor.
Yeah, yeah, or work under a contractor, I mean, you know, and that's, that's just the way it is.
You just say, you got two options, I mean, work under a contractor, homeowner.
But there's nobody on this board trying to put anybody out of the, of your work at all.
Well, that, that, that what we think, and people don't think different.
Well, that's always the same, that's not going to change.
That would go ahead.
I will say, the majority of these license holders already work for contractors.
Yes.
You have a lot of contractors that use these guys as subcontractors.
Yes.
So, they're already working under a contractor. It's not going to change anything in their day to day. It's just going to be, you know, a little less money out of their pocket every year and... Mr. Chairman, I'm going to see if you call for public comment yet.
No, I haven't, sorry.
I'm standing thinking about it, I'm sorry.
We got, sorry, we asked a question of Mr. Patterson, no, I knew we hadn't called for a public comment. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. At this time, is anybody here that wants, wishes to comment publicly on this matter? If you do, now is your time to speak. Please come forward to be recognized. What about on Zoom?
Anybody attending virtually via Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please use the ra- the raise hand feature on your smart device. One more ask, no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any more discussion to be had by the commission? If not, we'll entertain a motion either way. So, what's the pleasure of the board? Can I table it? It is a public hearing, so there needs to be an action.
I'll make a motion to, to approve it.
And I'll second it.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass this five of them, Mr. Justice.
Good.
That concludes our public hearing, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, commissioners, do you guys wish to go back to our planning zoning report? Do you want a break for lunch? What's the pleasure of the board?
We just got that, and then the...
The reports.
The reports. I'm okay with going straight through.
I am too.
Commissioner?
Yeah, we can't let him go.
By the candy stand.
I'm not letting Commissioner Lockley go anymore.
Ms. Courtney, you're up next, planning zoning adjustment, board report.
Uh, do you care if I do the second part of mine before I do the P and Z?
That's fine.
So that Steve can get out of here?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so my second part of my, I'm not going to share a screen yet. We had a discussion, the building official and I had a discussion about the Landarc Special District Review Committee, and we proposed the following steps to kind of help that situation, if that makes sense? So, our first step would be that the Landarc Special District Review Committee will only evaluate applications that are required to have committed review as outlined, outlined in the S four Landarc Village Special District Zoning Ordinance and forward their findings to the zoning department. The next step would be that the findings will be a part of the application submitted process to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Adjustment Board, who will review the application and site plan and make a recommendation to the county commission board. The county commission board will then make a final approval, and then the last step would be that if it's approved, then me as the zoning administrator will write a letter to the applicant approving that submitted application and site plan, but the approval letter will be only good for a year. So, the issue is, there's certain things that don't have to have a permit, that don't need a permit, fences, sheds that are smaller than a certain square footage. And the review, there is, that they're outlined in the S four zoning ordinance special district. So, how do we deal with those? To where they'll, they're able to be able to put their fence up or put their shed up without any issues. So, that's why instead of having to have a permit, it would be zoning committee review or zoning administrative review, planning and zoning review, then they get a letter saying, okay, what you're proposing, you can go ahead and do. The review committee is supposed to review certain things that's in the ordinance, and those are the things that we're addressing, just those things right there. Only things that are outlined in the ordinance are what we're going to be reviewing.
So, the board remembers how we got here was, uh, two meetings ago, you guys were, were, kind of had concerns about what role exactly this, this review committee played, and, and so you asked us to look at it and come back with some recommendations, and here we are. So, basically, all requests for permits, Landarc Village, even if it's in the S four, will go before the Planning and Zoning Administrative Board. However, the review committee's role will now be, they will look at it like they've been doing, investigate or whatever was the term you want to use, and send their findings to, to Courtney, and she will then include that as part of the write-up you see for every request that comes in front of Planning and Zoning Adjustment Board. So, their, their role will only be to basically have a finding or opinion about that particular permit that's been pulled. So, they, they won't need to clear it first before the permit's submitted to the county, that's, that's not it. They'll have to work within the timeframe that the state now requires us to work once a permit is, application is submitted.
So, don't they do that in something like a homeowners association?
Yeah, yes, yes, Commissioner, that's, that's, it's kind of like, yeah, to some degree it is.
But they don't get any of it either.
No, but you do have a special zone for a certain area of Landarc Village. So, I hate to say that it's treated like a homeowners association, but it kind of is.
Kind of feels that way, yeah.
Yeah. It, it shouldn't be, but, you know, but...
Mr. Chairman, should there not be some expected timeframe that the review committee does its job within a certain timeframe deadline?
Yes. Courtney will have to explain to them the deadline for the next planning and zoning agenda that has to go up. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's a big key.
I'm sorry, yes. Yes. So, they will have to have it into her by, by then, once she tells them what agenda is going to be on, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, they will review applications within this special district.
Yes.
Correct.
They not allowed to go on people's property and tell them they can't do this, and, and I'm going to put a stock war goater on you and all.
That's right.
This is what was going on, what I understand.
Yeah.
And there wasn't one person doing it, because there ain't no committee. Now, how are we going to establish a committee to review this documentation? They shouldn't be going to these people's private property and telling them, you can't do this, and you can't do, that's not what, within the scope. Am I, am I understanding what we're doing here?
Correct.
Yes, that's right.
And if I'm not, somebody tell me, but going on somebody's property and pulling up there next to the house and tell, oh, you can't do this, I, I'm the committee, that ain't what the responsibility is. They're supposed to review the documentation and submit it to P and Z for their consideration. Then P and Z makes a recommendation to this board. So, all these steps need to be put out there where the people know what their responsibility is as a member of the committee. Not going to these people's houses and being confrontational, because they're not an agent of the county, right?
Yeah, they are.
So, they go, people probably tell them, they going to do this, they going to do that, that's what I'm trying to say.
By create, this board creating a review committee, they are, in, in some sense, a quasi-agent of the county, because we created the entity.
But their scope of work, or their, whatever needs to be properly defined...
Yes.
That they don't go to these people's private property and be confrontational to them, they're not Mr. Patterson.
Yeah.
He has that ability.
Yes.
To walk up there and say, the building's not being done right and all. These people don't have that responsibility, and it's not their place to do that. That's where all this confusion started from. And there's no appointing committee. How many person, person committees there supposed to be?
Two right now.
Two?
There are two.
Is all what the ordinance designates?
Well, see, this is not an ordinance, it's not an ordinance, that was a motion by the board.
So, what, what created the committee?
A, a motion by the board.
Yeah.
But it was never defined what a committee is, or how many members it would be, or anything like that.
Yeah.
Supposed to be three, it was supposed to be a three-member board or committee.
And they should meet once a month to review if you, if they got anything going on Landarc Village within this S four district.
Mm-hmm.
That's what they should be doing. That's it.
But only things outlined in S four.
Yeah.
Because there's other things that need a permit.
Needs to be properly defined.
Yeah.
As to what their responsibilities are, what they're supposed to be doing. And if it's not defined, then they don't supposed to be doing it.
Can I, can I ask a quick? What is their qualification for them to be doing that? For them to be overseeing that?
Ah, based on the minutes I saw, none, it was an appointment by, by the, that, the district's commissioner.
Yeah, this is volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the volunteer got to know something about what he looking at.
True. Bless him, God bless him.
I mean, if he, what, if he overseeing it, look, building a house?
No.
No.
That's not outlined in S four. Only things outlined in S four.
Ah.
Like, there are certain things that need a permit that have to go before the permits department to get a permit to be, to get an inspection. There are certain things in here that don't need a permit or an inspection, they just need to be reviewed by our office to say, yeah, you're able to do that, depending on what the S four regulations say.
So, you, you, you guys get what Courtney's saying, there are things in S four that will never come in front of the building department because it's just doesn't, there's not a requirement.
Right.
You know, if there's a fence, if, what was it, a shed that's built under certain, certain size.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so this...
That's what this commu- committee is reviewing?
Things like that, that's it.
That's what they're supposed to be doing.
That's what they're supposed to be doing in S four, yes.
Well, what...
So, they're reviewing stuff that don't even need a permit to be done?
Yes, that's why Courtney just explained to you, she would have to, and on some things, she would have to write a letter, basically a letter from the zoning department, say, you have authority to do this because it does not require a permit, correct?
Correct.
You have the authority to do this because it doesn't require a permit?
Yes. I know you're looking at me like that makes no sense, but that's...
If it don't require a permit, why you need somebody to review it?
That's the, because of the, the language in this special zone, this S four in Landarc Village. There, there are things in there that go beyond the scope, I guess.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
I still don't understand what this committee's supposed to be doing. They look, they reviewing stuff that don't even require a permit?
I mean, those commissioners really...
So, how you going to turn the people down and tell them they can't do it if they don't even require a permit?
And that's, that's not their job to, to turn it down.
Huh?
It's basically, it is not their job to turn down whatever someone brings forward to them, it's basically just based off of S four, give them regulations of what they can and can't do.
Yeah.
Some of these sidewalks are three feet wide, right to the edge of somebody's front step, and somebody wants to create a garden right in that area. Well, that's kind of where this is all about.
That don't make no sense, that's, that's some people's property, if they want to create a garden at the front door, that's all right with me. That's their place, that ain't...
I think some of it's because it's the barracks, and it's really close together.
The barracks, like the barracks, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's where a lot of it is, the special district, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the S four district, the barracks.
Where the barracks are, so they're right, you know, it's just side by side.
Yeah.
So, that's what, that's what I think, which it was created before our time, basically, but that's what the S four was for.
I'd make a motion, we get rid of the S four.
Wait, 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 so...
What was that? Get rid of the S four?
It's part of the, it's part of the zoning ordinance, the, the review committee is different from the S four.
Get rid of the committee.
Oh.
Okay.
I, I had it, right. I'd make a motion, we get rid of that committee.
I don't understand.
Tell them to leave people alone.
I just don't understand, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion to absolve the Landarc Review Committee by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a second, but I don't understand nothing about this, and I'm not no idiot, but some of this stuff just don't make no sense to me.
So, whether...
I mean, I hate to do away with the committee and still have S four there, why have S four there if you ain't got no committee?
Okay.
I mean, I don't understand what...
They don't, they don't have to go hand in hand, right?
Yeah.
They don't have to go hand in hand.
They go what now?
They don't have to go hand in hand, the committee does not have to go in hand in hand with S four ordinance. I can still regulate the S four ordinance without the committee.
So, was that a second or not?
What I'm trying to do is just put it in y'all hands, everything in y'all hands. They ain't got no business...
That's what will happen, basically, you're turning over the enforcement of S four to your zoning department.
But what is S four enforcing? I know you said if it's barracks.
Can you pull that up, Courtney?
Yeah.
From the, from the new website?
Yes.
And show us what S four is.
I'm trying to look it up right now.
So, I will say this while you're looking it up, my bigger concern, and, and it's like other stuff that maybe was done in the past, there, there are issues trying to be addressed, and I understand that. However, in the current iteration of this review committee, my, my issue with it is it's all being done out of the sunshine, which we all have to function in. So, it'd be different if there was a review committee that met every month, the week before the planning zoning advisory board met, and they had a public agenda, and there was public comment, and it was publicly discussed. We, I don't think we, this board, need to have anything functioning under us that's not in the sunshine. And that's my biggest problem with it. It's not about who's doing what, and if it's not going to be done orderly and properly, we need to absolve it till we can come up with something that is done orderly and properly.
Report, Mr. Chairman.
Well, my point is that the people need representation locally, and this, if you do this, it's going to absolve all that.
Well, if it come, Mr. Bolt, Commission Bolt, I'm not trying to be smart, but if we put this back in the hand of the, this department, complaint come up, wouldn't they take care of it?
Courtney.
I mean, wouldn't it be took care of it on the aisle way, to the outside? It still come back to them anyway. It's going to reach them, it's coming back, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, why do we need, if they got a complaint, they can complain to them, and what you go, in the end, it already come back. Why go through the miller man when you got them the hell of a situation? Do that make sense? I mean, if it don't, tell me that.
Well, I just know that there's, um, ground zero people that are right there, living with these issues day in and day out. That perhaps our staff doesn't have the sense that they do. They're residents there that live in that particular environment. And I think the, these, the two people that I know of have a lot of pride about the quality of life that should occur there in that special area of Landmark District.
That's good.
They're my eyes and ears to the ground down there.
That's good, but only don't like me in a, and I'm saying that. They right up anything. Or they don't like their other buddy.
Well, yeah, I, I don't think that happens with the, this, these particular personalities.
I ain't saying to do that. I'm not saying to do, but you know.
I understand.
It's life.
Courtney, you got page number ninety-four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That ordinance is that long?
No, this is just, I just pulled it out from.
Okay, okay.
The full ordinance. It's only two, two pages.
It's only two pages.
Yeah, that, that's all your zoning classifications, what she's looking at, Commissioner Parrish, S four is at the very end of the.
But it's got about blocking sidewalks or obstruction of structures, or no permanent carports, carports can't be within seventy feet of the property line, those kinds of things. It's really honest, just to make sure everybody takes accurate accounting of making sure they're not encroaching on anybody else's property.
So, so what you're saying is if you do away with the committee, you would be the one looking at all this.
Correct.
Per every application that's turned in for that special district.
Yes.
It just bypasses the committee. I would have the, yes. And they couldn't, wouldn't be able to start anything until I give them go, the go ahead to do it.
Right, but that tells me that there is no favoritism. If we do it that way, you're gonna review every application, everybody's gonna be treated fairly and equitably and all this. You ain't gonna be over there going into people, public, private property and all this stuff. You gonna base your decision based on the application, and if something ain't right, you gonna call them and say, well, you can't do this. You need to resubmit a good application to, to meet all this criteria.
Correct. And then that way, we have a file. Like, if I write a letter and say, you know, as presented, I cannot authorize you to build this, this application denied, you could resubmit a new site plan or whatever. That way, we have that on file saying, they did try to come to us with this information, but we denied it because it wasn't correct based off of the S four ordinance.
Okay. Landmark Village is a very special, unique, customized district. It was former military housing that has been improved for living now with people who have congenial homes side by side. Uh, it's very unique, very different, and I think it needs somebody barefoot on the ground watching it, not standing arms length here in the county looking at it. That's the purpose of that particular committee.
But all this stuff we got in place now, right? What they, what they do, we got it, we already got it placed.
It's in our zoning code.
Yep, it's his part of his zoning code.
We have staff limitations, they have to go out there back and forth all the time. We got people there in Landmark Village that are already there, they can look at this stuff for our staff.
Commissioner Parrish, was that a second earlier?
Yes, it was.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure. Kind of back and forth, you didn't know if you wanted to make a second or not. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Lockley and we have a second by Commissioner Parrish. Any other discussion before we vote? To absolve the Landmark Review Committee. All in favor? Uh, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it's a four one vote. All right, Ms. Courtney, please proceed.
Okay, that's all I have for. Landmark, did you want to do your other part?
Uh, you gonna wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
We're gonna postpone them till the next meeting.
Okay.
We're gonna postpone, there's something else Steve was gonna do, we'll do it in the next meeting.
Okay, um, next, I'm just gonna bring forward the actual planning and zoning, um, information. So, first, we have nineteen nineteen Gulf Shore Boulevard. Um, they are building a single-family pier.
That's on the bottom of page two, if you're following on the paper application.
Ms. Courtney, before you start it, I want to make a, an observation.
Okay.
I noticed commissioners in reading through this report, that every one of these items on this, uh, planning, zoning, uh, agenda report, all received a five oh unanimous vote to approve.
Correct.
All right, go ahead.
Um, this doc will be, um, on nineteen nineteen Gulf Shore Boulevard, Dock Island, Franklin County, Florida. Um, this was submitted by Garlic Environmental for Rob Smith, who's the applicant. State, uh, permit has been received, so the application will be contingent upon receiving a federal permit.
And this is for a dock?
It's a pier. They, dock pier, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's a difference in a dock and a pier.
Yeah, but the state.
So, why, why is this one listed as a pier and every other applications?
Because the state is very, they have changed the regulations on what a pier and what a dock is.
Oh, they've changed that?
Yeah, so certain wording they have to use for the state and certain wording they have to, I mean, it's, yeah.
Because a, a pier before, you couldn't moor boats to it, it was just a pier.
Mm-hmm.
They've changed that?
Mm-hmm, they've changed the wording, the definition for it. State.
Okay, why ain't they all called a pier then?
Something about the way they're being constructed.
Yeah, where you can't moor to it like.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know.
That's all we know.
Yeah.
But I guess if they've changed it, they've changed it.
Yep.
Okay.
All four of these first items are docks or piers, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I also move to approve this. And you, Mr. Chairman, sorry, uh, P and Z B O A also approved this unanimously, correct? Correct, yeah. So, I'll approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed? That's unanimous. Is it in the interest of time, can we do all these at one time?
Sure. Consensus can be good.
Yeah.
So, I was gonna say my shameless plug once again for consensus, as I do ever so often. Don't laugh.
And Commissioner Parrish, I do want to say, this was a discussion that did come up at the meeting too, about the whole pier and dock thing, so you're not the only one worried about it. The definition.
I mean, if it's not doing anything wrong.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, so, so basically.
They're all the same subject matter.
Yeah. Yeah. So, this is something the board in the future can approve.
Now, there's two of them that are contingent though. I don't know if you want to do those together?
Well, no, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I have to do it.
They're still gonna be contingent though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And nothing's gonna change that.
And as you pointed out, all were approved, uh, by P and Z. So, in the future, if you guys want to approve them by blocks, it, it saves time unless you have one, you could pull it out.
I like consensus.
Uh, consensus, but anyway, I'm sorry. That's my shameless plug, thanks.
Okay, so the next one's at two sixty-five Magnolia Bay, then sixty-three South Bay Shore, and then fourteen oh seven East Gulf Beach Drive.
And sixty-three South Bay Shore Drive?
Right.
Yeah.
But all of them are either docks or piers. They're all either have their D E P N core permit or they're contingent on them.
Correct.
But then they all received a five oh vote from P Z and A.
Yes.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll approve, all of them.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, next, we have the sketch plat application. This is, this is one for Saint George Bay Phase Two. I don't know if you guys remember this one, this is one that, um, the attorney brought up before the board, that we would not be able to, um, approve a platted lot, a platted lot, but we had to do a replat. That's why I came back for a sketch plat.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Would you like me to clarify a little bit?
Yes.
Jump in there? All right, this is, uh, the property that we've referred to affectionately as the Great Wall of Franklin County, as everybody, Yellow Hill. Just on the Carabelle side of Yellow Hill. Um, there were six lots of record. They had originally asked the planning and zoning, followed by the county commission, to reconfigure the lot lines on their six lots of record. Uh, I had asked the board to pause that action because I had concerns about the authority of the county commission to reconfigure a legal description on a lot of record as opposed to plating lots of record, which there's a specific state statute, which authorizes the board to plant subdivisions. So, I've researched that, I've spoken to the property owner, I've spoken to the property owner's attorney, I've spoken to the property owner's surveyor, um, and, and asked all of them. If you find some authority that says that the county has that authority to reconfigure a legal description, let me know, because I cannot find it. No one provided me any other additional information, so I proceeded with advising, uh, the county, my client, that, um, they should, these property owners should go through a subdivision process. They agreed after their, their own attorney reviewed it. Uh, only four of the lots, according to the surveyor, are buildable. Uh, two of the lots were not buildable, and so what they're going to do is they, uh, as I understand it, although this says it's approval of five lots, what it really says when you look at the plat is it's four lots of record that do not require any variances, because I asked the surveyor, uh, when, when he was making his presentation, uh, that the four lots were buildable without the requirement of any variances. He, he answered in the affirmative. Uh, the, the fifth lot actually is not a buildable lot, it's common area. So, Courtney, sorry for muddying in, but you sort of invited.
Thank you.
Unless commissioners have any questions for me, that's the conclusion of my presentation. This is, uh, there, there will be another, uh, phase of the sketch plat, since it's so, so few lots, they will go directly to final plat approval, so that will be the next time you see this, is for final plat approval, most likely next month, but we're not in charge of how the applicant processes their application.
And, and the final should reflect the four buildable lots, not five?
Yeah, it, it's just a, a wording issue. The plat itself actually shows four lots in, in common area.
Okay. Pleasure, the board?
I also move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, just, just to make sure we're clear on the record, we are not approving a lot reconfiguration of any of the lots, this is simply a sketch plat approval.
Okay, thank you for that invitation.
Yeah.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, next I have for you two rezoning and land use change applications. The first one is three eighty-seven Mill Road. Um, this is a consideration for a public hearing for the rezoning and land use change of a five, um, give or take acre parcel, um, at three eighty-seven Mill Road, Carabelle, Florida. Application was submitted by Brandon Atkinson, who was the applicant. Um, I've included the G I S map. This is one that, um, Mark and I both reviewed. Um, this property used to be industrial. This is what they're asking to go back to, I forgot to put that in, I'm sorry. Um, they're going from R one to industrial. The property was industrial prior to this. It was bought by, um, a big development that tried to develop some R one big, you know, thing, and it never happened. So, um, the, what he's been doing on the property is considered industrial, and he's never changed the use of it. There's no living facility there or anything like that, so he's just trying to go back to what it was zoned prior. I'll make a motion to proceed to a public hearing for this.
Okay, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Um, next, we have one for forty-two Bay Shore Drive, consideration of request for public hearing to rezone, um, a parcel consisting of two lots, lots ten and lot, lot twelve, um, in Apalachicola, Franklin County, submitted by Francis and, and Deborah Giatt. Staff did review this one. Um, the property next to applicant, cornering Bay Shore Drive and, and Decent Street, um, are both zoned R four. Everything across the street for them is zoned R four. Um, Mark didn't see an issue with it, I didn't see an issue with what they were trying to rezone for.
So moved, second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, commissioners? I did see in there, they had, uh, letters of support from the neighbors as well.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And that is all I have for you.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Bankston? Ms. Courtney, thank you for your time. All right, Ms. Griffith?
All right, commissioners, uh, the first item on my report, uh, the FEMA, the FEMA-funded repairs of Alligator Drive are getting close to completion. The project is now back on track as utilities have been relocated. All sheet piles have been installed, the concrete shoulders are under construction, and from this point forward, barring any unforeseen weather delays, the project will progress quickly to paving, striping, and final completion with signage. As we have experienced an unusually wet spring and summer, the contractor has lost some days due to rain. The engineers are recommending approval of change order number four, which will, which will extend the substantial completion date to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two for the project. Board action to approve the attached no-cost time extension change order, which will extend the substantial completion date to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Let's just have a good ribbon coven, when this is all done.
I hear you, sir.
Not on this, but, uh, since we talking about paving, is them people still in the area? They still in the county?
Yeah, I believe they are.
I, I got something I want to add. I, I want to put some, I got through some roles I need to take.
Okay. Any more discussion on this motion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Griffith?
Okay, uh, the next item is item number two. Um, in July of twenty nineteen, Franklin County received a Hurricane Michael Recovery Assistance Grant in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Department of Economic Opportunity. This grant was intended to assist Franklin County with the local match requirement for FEMA restoration efforts. Once Hurricane Michael was officially classified as a category five hurricane at landfall, local match requirements were waived. The grant agreement had already been extended once before and was set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. In March, Franklin County requested an extension and scope change to fund alternate projects also impacted by Hurricane Michael, specifically the purchase of the old Alligator Point Fire Station in replacement of hurricane-damaged ballfield lights at Brumman Park. At the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting, the board signed the approved amendment granting an extension through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as approved by D E O, whereas the scope change was still pending review at that time. On Friday, September ninth, Franklin County was notified that the scope change request had been approved. Subsequent to the original request for the scope modification that was submitted in March, the appraisal for the fire department did not come in high enough to be within the purchase price stipulated in the original sales contract. At this time, is, it is undetermined if a new sales contract will be negotiated. This will, I understand this will be covered by Attorney Schuler's report later in the meeting. Uh, should the board not proceed with the purchase of the fire department property, the county could go back to D E O and ask for another scope modification for a substitute project. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached amendment four for the Hurricane Michael Assistance Grant.
Submit to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Now, the fire department, Alligator Point, did not praise high enough to get purchased?
That's right.
Uh, that's.
He's gonna have that in his report, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that if you would like.
All right.
The negotiated sales price range was between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand. Uh, the appraisal came in at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And one of the items I'm asking the board to consider under my report is whether you want to proceed with, uh, the purchase contract at the reduced price. That my understanding from the fire department is that they are ready to proceed, uh, but I have to get board action on your side of amending the contract to reduce the purchase price to the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar appraised price, and then there's another issue we have to deal with concerning, uh, M S B U funds as well.
So, what, what do we?
It does take a little while to work through the scope amendment process, um, so if, if the board decides to not proceed with the purchase of the fire department building, we'll just submit another scope revision, and it has to be something else that was impacted by Hurricane Michael. Um, but the Brumman Park ballfield lights are included in, uh, with this particular amendment.
But that's not an issue, but, you know, I. Is the fire department willing to take less money for the building?
Yeah.
Based on their appraised value?
That's gonna be.
Yes, that, that is the verbal. Uh, I have yet to ask them, or, excuse me, I have yet to present them with a formal written addendum for them to sign and send back, but I've had several discussions, and my understanding is, is that they're frankly waiting on me to send them the addendum, which I, uh, was not going to do until I came back to the board and got your authority, uh, for the reduced purchase price, and then there was the, um, other issue dealing with the potential use of M S B U funds to purchase one of the lots and whether or not. with the potential use of MSBU funds to purchase one of the lots, and whether or not the board should or should not proceed with purchasing one of the lots with grant funds, because there was a statement that perhaps MSBU funds had been used in the late 1980s, early 1990s to purchase one of the two lots, and I think it was lot five.
Perhaps we should table this until we get through the other points.
We've already got a motion and second. Just some discussion before we vote. Unless you want to withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw the motion and just table this.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Get a little more information.
Stand by.
Okay.
I actually think we need to purchase the fire department if that's what we submitted for. I know we have to change the scope because the appraisal value come way down, and now you got to get a commitment from Alligator Point if they still willing to sell that building. And if that's what we got to do, that's what we got to do. I don't think we should snatch the money and go do something else.
No.
We're still committed. If the fire department is still willing to sell the building, then I think we need to continue through on our commitment.
Yeah. We just need a step forward.
I didn't understand that's what we're doing in this anyway.
And Mr. Chairman, I didn't want to take away from, you know, Brumman Park was included in this as well, and I don't want to take away or hold off or put that off anymore than what it has been either. So that's one of the reasons why I made the motion to approve, because, you know, kind of out for my district, but I didn't take into consideration the fire department as well, so.
So I don't know how we went where we are, but that's not what Ms. Griffith was asking for.
Well, the bottom two lines said, should the board not proceed with the purchase of the fire department?
Because she don't know what we're going to do.
Well, I'm saying we need, but the board as a whole needs, we need to move forward with that.
Right. That's on Attorney Schuler's report. It's coming up.
Yeah.
So it's in two different reports.
Yes, sir.
But I didn't want to take action on this report. It's going to prohibit us from taking action on his report.
Yeah, this one is actually signing the grant amendment, amendment number four, which included the ballfield lights and the fire department acquisition, but we submitted the amendment, the scope change request actually in March. So the only thing that would have to happen at that point was, you know, once we signed this latest amendment, we would actually go back to DEO if we decide not to buy the fire department and actually do another scope change request, but it just takes.
Or if we decided not to buy, we can buy the last money.
I didn't understand the two were connected. I think hers is probably independent of mine, unless the board rejects moving forward the purchase, in which case she then has to take a further subsequent step.
I think Ms. Griffith just didn't want to put in the report that we were going to take a specific action. That's why it's worried.
Until the board made the decision.
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't want to box you all into any sort of.
Yeah, but all we're asking for is an amendment for DEO.
Correct.
It has, I mean, has language in it about the fire department, but it's not about the fire department. It's about submitting paperwork to DEO. So you drew your motions. Is there a motion to table, or?
I mean, I don't, I think that the confusion is both, there's two different reports, and I think, I don't know, Commissioner Parrish thought that by motioning to approve, we were putting that in jeopardy. I'm not sure. All we're doing right now is approving and authorizing the chairman's signature on this amendment. That's correct. That's it.
That's correct. Correct. There is no sales contract at this time.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve again.
The amendment doesn't prevent the board from completing the purchase, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. I will be sure.
Okay.
So I'll remake my motion.
And I'll second.
So I guess, as I've heard it say before, is that clear as much?
Yeah.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor about this DEO amendment, is what we're trying to get done and signed and sent to the state.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed, Ms. Griffith.
Okay. Next item, item number three, Lanark Village Volunteer Fire Department Feral Gas invoice. On September 12th, 2022, Mr. Joe Ross of the previous Lanark Village Fire Department Board dropped off a statement for Feral Gas. The subject invoice was for the annual gas tank rental for cooking and heat at the fire station. Board action to approve payment of the attached invoice and statement from Feral Gas in the amount of $129.48, and this will be paid from MSBU proceeds for that particular district.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Griffith?
Okay. The next item is item number four. At the meeting in Lanark Village on Thursday with the fire marshal, it was discussed that training for the new volunteers could begin as early as October 6th. Michael Moreau can provide an update after this action item on that. Board action to authorize county staff to turn on the utilities at the Lanark Village Fire Department building.
So they will start, and this is all based on a meeting that happened last Thursday, and Commissioner Bolt will probably give an update, and if you want to do it now, in a few minutes when I do my report, but they will start officially training the volunteer firefighters at the fire department October 6th. I think the first meeting is at 6:30, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe that's correct.
They will have ongoing trainings. So they do need water, and they will need power at the fire department in Lanark Village.
You got some, they got some volunteers?
Yes, and I will tell you about that story shortly, but yes, they did. After a while, yeah, we got there. Quite a few, as a matter of fact, commissioners, I've had the meeting. Pretty impressive.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Okay, commissioners, I do have another action item. Ms. Tracy Busby was going to present this earlier in the meeting, but the only thing that we need from you all at this time is we would like to actually file a notice of intent for the brick grant application, and that is the Building Resilient Infrastructure Grant Program, which is funded by FEMA and administered by the Florida Department of Emergency Management. The application window opens September 30th, and it's for mitigation projects, so it has to be cost-effective projects designed to increase resilience and public safety for critical infrastructure facilities. We did have three project ideas. We have been looking for funding everywhere for these three projects, so we're just going to keep trying to push these items until we actually get a grant project that works for one of these programs. Our three concepts are the courthouse roof and ceiling of the building's masonry walls, the window replacement at Weems Memorial Hospital. We have not heard back yet from the CDBG program on that, and then also security windows at the Franklin County jail. So I don't know if you all had any other critical infrastructure projects that you wanted us to also to try, or if that's an adequate list.
I'll let, Ms. Griffith, I'll ask you a question. I'm not trying to set you up for not knowing something, but I'll be surprised if you don't. And the brick grant, are they wanting us to submit several things together, or these are going to be standing on applications? And are we limited to the number of applications we can turn in?
We are not limited to the number of applications. However, the notice of intent is basically they want us to submit our concepts and our ideas, and then they will come back and say, yes, this works, no, this is not. Yeah, so right now, it's not even a formal application process. It's just getting ideas into them.
So actually, the more concepts, the better?
Correct.
Okay.
We may be able to move forward quickly.
Is there anywhere we can maybe be sent the information on that brick grant, so we can look kind of over the wording of it?
Yes.
And see if we can help think of any ideas that might, any pegs that might fit in that hole?
Okay. Yeah, we'll do.
That would be good. But you're still wanting the board to move forward to send it in, or what are we doing? What are you asking for?
If we could just move forward on these three concepts, and then if we receive any more, the application window does not close until early November.
Okay.
So we do have time to add other projects to the list.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve and proceed.
We have a motion to approve submitting these three to the brick grant by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, commissioners, and the next item is just informational only, the CDBG housing grant application. On Friday, I spoke with CDBG consultant Marie Dingman, and she confirmed that the county has been approved for the $700,000 in CDBG housing grant assistance, which will include the replacement of site-built and mobile homes. The county should receive the formal grant agreement sometime in the next month.
That's great.
Give you all some good news.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Darian before we proceed? All right. Mr. Moreau, you're up.
All right. Page 23, item number two. As an information item, at the last meeting, it was stated that the ship certification was submitted to the state due to communication error. It should have been an action item requesting board authorization to have the chairman sign the certification. As the report was due on the 15th, I had determined to sign with the anticipation that the board would ratify his signature today. Board action to ratify his signature on the ship certification.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley and Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item three, another quick formality annually after your budget adoption, public hearing to help the department's core contracts for operation. The Franklin County Health Department are presented for your approval and the chairman's signature. The Health Department appears before the board during your budget workshop to review their budget. I just need you to authorize the chairman's signature on those core contracts.
Submit.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Item four, page 24. Recently, the board appointed members to the county's local technology planning team. As I was preparing to send out invites for the organizational meeting, I realized that Commissioner Bolt's appointment was not from his district and was the spouse of Commissioner Ward's appointment. I suggested to Commissioner Bolt that he nominate someone from his district that meets one of the organizations or industries set forth in Florida statute. With that said, Commissioner Bolt is nominating Ms. Victoria Hart from his district. Commissioner Bolt said that Ms. Hart is a former teacher and has some technical knowledge. Correct, sir?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. In a, I will ask both the city of Appalachia and Carabelle if they would like to have representation also in the LPTPT, which will change it to seven members instead of five. I think that'll make it quicker. In addition, since the county is behind on this process, and we are, I would like the board to appoint Ms. Pat O'Connell. She was District One's appointment, appointee, as the interim chairman of this committee. With this appointment, Ms. O'Connell will be able to help me expedite this process so we can catch up with the other counties. I'm looking for free help, commissioners, to be very honest with you, and that's why I'm asking you guys to appoint Ms. Pat as the chairman. So two motions, one to accept Ms. Victoria Hart as District Two's seat on that board, and the second motion is to appoint Ms. Pat O'Connell as your interim chairman to that committee, the team.
So moved.
On which one?
Motion to approve Ms. Hart as the appointment for District Two.
So moved.
By Commissioner Bolt, correct?
Yes.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Why she got to be the interim? Why she can't be at will?
I use that because the committee hadn't had the organizational meeting yet. I think when they meet, they're going to support that and continue her as the chairman, but if you want me to remove interim, I could, commissioner, that's not a problem.
Oh, I know, I could.
Yeah, we could.
I got no problem.
But that's a second. We're still on the first motion?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion, as long as she's not here today, but as long as Ms. Pat O'Connell's okay with it.
She is.
Vote to appoint, make a motion to appoint her as interim or chairman of the LPTPT.
All right. So a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right. Item five, commissioners. Commissioner Parrish has requested and receive a quote of $146,665 from Robertson Roberts for pipe patch. Commissioner Parrish, please feel free to correct me if I say this wrong, and overlay paving work at the following locations intersecting with Highway 98, 26th Avenue, Ace Hardaway Entrance, Bayview, and Jackie Whitehurst. In addition, he also asked for some lime rock and paving work done at the boat ramp located at Buddy Ward Park and Museum. This is a change order to your road paving contract and will be paid from District Three's road paving funds.
Okay, and I want, I got some work I need in my district. Do I have to put that in the motion?
Well, we have to get a proposal first, so let's go over the stuff, get them to send us a proposal, and I'll bring it up at the next meeting, commissioner.
All right.
Okay, so we know how much it is. The board could approve the whole quote, the entire comprehensive course at the same time. I'm sorry.
That's true. These four stretches that need paving is something that I brought up when the DOT sent the representatives down here. So when they sent back what they were doing in each district, they didn't even say anything about what I talked to them about. And I brought that to Mike's attention. I said, what I asked them to do and some issues I have wouldn't even address in their response. They addressed every commissioner's letter, every commissioner's concerns in their each prospective district, didn't say nothing about mine. And two weeks ago, I saw y'all see all these pipes showing up, and they start making repairs, which was supposed to have been done whenever they repaved 98 from the stoplight here out to Tilton Road. It was supposed to have been part of that same project. So that's been going on for three years. Finally, they're getting to it. So I told them if they would replace the culvert pipes on the state right away, then I'd pay to do the paving. Two of these roads are through roads from 98 to Brownsville Road, which is Jackie Whitehurst and Bayview. The other two is just, one of them going into today's hardware, that culvert was falling in. Of course, when you pave up to that culvert, where they replaced the culvert, then it turns into private property, and we obviously can't pay that. And the other street, they replaced the pipe, and the road is fine, but it just need to be paved by culvert. Having said that, you can expect a change order because there was no striping included in the proposal, where they restriped the streets that they're actually going to repay. So there'll be a little bit of a change, not that much.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion we perceive of that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item six, commissioners. Commissioner Parrish has also requested to receive a quote for $33,775 from Robertson Roberts to pave the parking lot in front of the Buddy Ward Seafood Heritage Museum. This will be a change order to the paving contract, and will be paid from TDC funds. Board action to approve this change order.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley and Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion?
This was actually a project that, you know, we've done a lot of paving out there at Buddy Ward Park already. John Salden, TDC director, recommended that we do this in front of the museum so that it takes less time for fonder to have to go out there and cut the grass, grass growing up between the actual oyster shells that they're parking on now, to go ahead and pave that. And there will be a change order in that also because there was no striping included in their quote, and maybe some different wheel stops depending on how we design the parking area that will finally be there. So there'll be a little bit of difference in both of these projects based on the striping and wheel stop.
Yeah, commissioner, this helps the ADA compliance, to possibly ADA compliant for access to the museum also.
That's correct.
So that's the big thing, because those two big spots are right there.
That's correct.
And it's not paved at the moment, so.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item seven, moving on to page 25. The Alligator Point Fire Department is applying for USDA community facilities grant for a new fire truck. The fire department has asked for B-O-C-C letter of support, which was due on September 15th as part of the application packet. I ask the chairman to sign the letter of support to USDA, anticipating the board to ratify his signature. Board action to ratify the chairman's signature on that letter of support to USDA.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Good. Thank you for that.
Commissions, item eight. Thus far, not being successful in scheduling a date for this year's ethics class. Attorney Jennifer Schuler is available all Saturdays during the month of November. If we're unable to set a date for the class, I can register each commissioner to take class online via the Florida Association of Counties website. Is there a Saturday in November that everyone is available? I ask, please, that you look at your schedules and let me know by when, I'll say Thursday, so I can set this class, okay? Because I know elections in November, you have canvassing board, and it makes, it really makes it tough with that, so please, I ask you guys to look at that. If I may, Mr. Chairman, item nine, request for qualifications for TDC internet marketing, print and general marketing, local radio, and online advertising. This is an informational item. Local television, airtime, and video production have been advertised and set to be open and read aloud at your October 4th meeting. A review committee comprised of Mr. Walter Armstead, Ms. Lynn Martina, Mr. Jel Patel, and representatives from the city of Appalachia Cola and the city of Carabelle yet to be named, will hear the presentations from each person or firm that submit a package and complete a score sheet, which will be forwarded to me. I will then tally those scores, present those results to this board at the following regular meeting for your review and possibly your award.
Before you proceed, I do want to say something about that. We need to make sure, just in trying to make sure we're doing things right. We do want to represent. representatives from the cities, but they cannot be the mayor because both of them sit on the T D C board.
They cannot, that's correct.
And they all, all these review committee members need to be made aware of the sunshine law, they cannot discuss this.
Yes, they're bound by the sunshine law.
Yes.
And finally, I'll let Commissioner Bolt take the lead on this one, if I need to jump in, I will, but last Thursday, Commissioner Bolt, at what, five o'clock? That's correct?
Yes, at five o'clock last Thursday, there was approximately, oh, near forty people assembled at Chilis Hall in interest for the reorganization of the St. James Landarch Village Fire Department. Present were officers from the Florida Association of Firefighters, that was Mr. Robert Amick, and another gentleman whose first name is Eric, and I'm not sure if it was that name.
Eduardo, yes.
There you go. At that point, there was several items that were diffused. One was, are we going to have a formal board set up with the Landarch Village-St. James Fire Department? And essentially, for now, that board is Mr. Amick and Mr. Eric of the Florida Association of Firefighters, just to set things sort of in motion. There was call for applications for volunteers. The call was to say that you didn't have to fight a fire to be a volunteer with the Fire Department, and it was very, very clear that there were many different needs there. Firefighters who would be simply administrative folks, people who would facilitate the day-to-day operations, everything from cleaning equipment to cooking gumbo. There was also discussion about the need for willing, able-bodied firefighters specifically. At that meeting, approximately six to eight applications for different options for volunteerism occurred. There also is another meeting scheduled, I believe, for six or six-thirty P M., but on October sixth. All meetings going forward will be at the Landarch Village-St. James Fire Department. That'll be opening up the physical plant, looking at the inventory there, et cetera, and all meetings will be guided by these two officers from the Florida Firefighters Association. Also, I want to be aware that there are some folks who from Landarch, excuse me, from St. James area that came to these meetings, that was very, very noteworthy, and also two members, or three members, from the Alligator Point Fire Fighters, Alligator Point Fire, Volunteer Fire Association, Volunteer Fire Department were there. They brought up a lot of standards of practice that they did at that, at Alligator Point. There was a lot of bonding in that particular meeting, a lot of willingness to go and help, mutual aid, et cetera. So it looks like it's going to be a different environment entirely. Just, I think we've already covered this up, we want to make sure that we get the keys and get access to that Fire Department in time for the next meeting, and I'll stand by to help you in that regard. So things are looking better now.
A couple of things, I'm sorry, sir, if you're finished.
That's all.
Couple of things I want to verify, Commissioner Bolt, talk about Mr. Robert Amick and Eduardo and myself forming a board. He did that for the sake of argument because we could not get anyone to be, to participate because they didn't, you know, that, that back and forth, you know, thing was going on, people really didn't want to do anything, you know, and you had someone in the audience that said, we still need a board person, so that kind of.
Yeah.
Pushed everybody away. So Robert was like, look, for the sake of argument, here's your board. Now can we proceed?
Yeah.
And then from there, the floodgates opened, everyone was willing to volunteer, but I will say this, the board of county commissioners is the board over all your volunteer fire departments, but specifically, we have a bigger role at the moment at St. James Landarch Village because we are still controlling bill payments, we are acting like the true advisory board or whatever you want to say. So I want to clarify that. He said that, kind of tongue-in-cheek, actually, but, you know, everyone, because I said that to everyone, the county commission is the board over the St. James Landarch Village Fire Department. So I just kind of want to put that on the record to make sure everyone understood. But once that was done, Commissioner Bolt is absolutely right, it was, it just snapped, there was a light switch in the room, everybody was ready to join, participate, and do whatever needed to be done to get that done. There are a few people I want to thank, I want, I do want to thank Ms. Patricia Bloodworth, she allowed us to have it at the, at Chilis Hall, which was a very good environment, a very good place, they had it set up really nice for us. I need to thank a few people, Steve could raise his hand, he spoke at the meeting, he helped encourage people, so did the Alligator Point Fire Chief, his person, he spoke, the Sheriff's Department was there, they were really, they contributed also, kept a sense, once they got there, kept a sense of calm, but they also participated in some of the things we were talking about. So that, it was really good, it ended up being good. It didn't start that way, but it ended up really good, and I think, commissioners, we see progress, and that's basically sums it up unless you guys have any specific questions about it.
I wanted to commend Mr. Marone for being there as well. You really helped facilitate everything, got the audio system working and, and kind of began to facilitate the meeting as it started and as it continued, very, very helpful, and thank you.
No, no problem.
I'd like to commend him for being his, being elected to the Landarch Village Fire Department.
Yeah. What? It was very good, very well done.
Appreciate your service, Mike.
You bet.
Thank you. If I'm the chief?
No, not really.
We've not been here too long.
Yeah, I'm glad you said it, Mr. Chairman.
I see a real, a really special reset button starting for that, the Fire Department, and I predict it's going to be a good new standard of practice for Fire Departments throughout the county.
I hope it works good.
Is that the end of your report, sir?
That's in my report.
Mr. Chairman, I got something for Mr. Marone.
That's right.
The new chief.
Hey. Cowboy or Indian?
So, obviously, we know that the bay's been closed, been closed for five years, we're into that, what, three-year, three of the five years so far. There's a new organization that's come together, and they're trying to relearn and rehash everything out about the bay. It seems to be Work and Waterman's Association, they're gonna have a meeting with some government officials in the coming weeks. I don't know, I would like an update at some point in time about what's going on, I know Dr. Sandra Brooke comes and speaks on behalf of the N R or whatever she's doing, but I don't know if maybe we can have a representative from F W C that maybe can come. But also, I don't know if the board would entertain a motion or think about maybe giving this entity a letter of support for when they do go and speak with some of the higher-ups from the state. Basically, their, their mission is to try to attempt to get the bay reopened. To get it reopened within that five years, they go out, they, I know that some commissioners may have already taken a trip out on a boat with these individuals, I've been trying to, I've just, my schedule hasn't lined up because they have to get permission from F W C to go out under the oyster beds, to look at the oysters, to see how they're progressing. They are progressing, they're growing, you've got, you know, obviously a mixed bag of people saying they are growing, some people that aren't, versus what they're doing the studies and such like that. So I don't know if maybe we could have you reach out to the individual that's, that's on this board to see what maybe we could do to help them, I guess, if we're all in agreement with that. I don't think it's going to hurt, I mean, I think we all, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but I know that me personally, I'm ready for the bay to get open back up for our, for our people that work on the bay. I know that we're, the state oversees us and does basically what they want and tells us what to do, and we have to honor that, but I want to try to help get it open sooner than the five years that they have, since we do see growth and we do see progress in the bay.
There definitely is, Commissioner, and Mr. Williams was here, I don't know, probably a couple of months ago, he's the one that's kind of heading up this organization. Mr. Marone, if you don't have his number, I do.
Please, thank you.
And, and because we did ask him at that time to keep us updated, so I think it would be a good thing to do.
And, and it is, it is that gentleman that reached out to me, Mr. Wayne Williams, and I've got, you could get his contact information from me or the chairman, but, but they do have set up some meetings with some pretty, pretty interesting, I wouldn't say powerful people, but from the governor's office and down or up that they're meeting with, and I thought anything that we could do from our perspective as a board to support that, I, I'm all for it.
Okay. So just to make sure, I mean, and these are directives, I'm not looking for a motion, basically, get, get F W C back, get them back on the agenda, the next meeting they're available to update the board, and then reach out to Mr. Wayne Williams about a letter of support, how does he need it worded, basically.
Correct.
And once that's done, then I'll bring that back to the board for approval.
Yes.
Cool? Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, I remember we talked, we began this conversation with, give us a progress report on how the bay is going on. We met with Billy Sermons at F W C's office there in Carabelle back last November, and still haven't really seen any, any movement in that request for the public to get a progress report on how things are going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Marone before we proceed? Michael, wouldn't it be appropriate for you to make this announcement here instead of Commissioner?
You could, if you don't mind, sir.
Okay, so Ms. Wilder come in earlier, she admitted to be on public comments, they're holding a, an event at the Holy Family Senior Center, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, five o'clock, and it's about litter and possibly recycling, different stuff, they have speakers from Keep Florida Beautiful and some other people there involved. We do have some of these, we'll put out here so the public can see. There's an email to send it to, there's, you know, different stuff, if people have questions, but they're going to have that event about litter and recycling in the county.
Mr. Chairman, I, they sent me an email while I was reviewing my emails quickly, so I'll use that email to put something, I guess, on the website if you don't mind, okay?
Thank you. Anything else before we proceed? Attorney Schuler, you're up.
All right, sir. Final action item on my report regards a subject matter we've already discussed briefly, which is, I need board action whether to move forward with the closing on the purchase and sale of two lots from the Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department. I had attached a copy of the contract and the special conditions to my report, so unless there are any specific questions, I will not go over that contract or the terms. The two issues that I need board action on, one is that the contract provided the purchase price ranging between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars, the appraiser came in at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In order for me to have that contract amended, I need board decision whether or not you want to proceed with the purchase and sale at the reduced price of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The second issue is there was a public comment a couple of meetings back that one of the two lots being purchased, Lot Five may have been purchased with M S B U funds back in nineteen eighty-nine into the early nineteen nineties. I went to the public record, pulled up the note and the mortgage and the deed, and in fact, Lot Five was purchased for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars in nineteen eighty-nine, there was three thousand dollars paid down on a nine thousand dollar promissory note. I have spoken with what I understand to be the relevant parties on, I guess, left and right of the issue of whether or not M S B U funds were or were not used to purchase some part of or all of, or none of Lot Five. I've not received or been able to locate any documentary evidence, I did receive some anecdotal evidence that the, from a, I didn't speak to them directly, but, you know, I was told this person said that Alligator Point, they were a member of that Fire Department back in the eighties, and that they had made a decision, it was their recollection, the decision was not to purchase the lot until they got a reliable source of funding, the implication being the reliable source of funding was M S B U funds. I can neither confirm nor deny what the source of the funds were, I've not been able to locate any information, no one's been able to provide me with information one way or the other. So I did some research on the use of grant funds to purchase Lot Five, and it may or may not have been purchased with M S B U funds. Frankly, I cannot find any law that's one way or the other on that issue, all the case law that I found that popped up and all the information that my law clerk was able to find. We're not on point with the issue of if M S B U funds were used to purchase one of these two lots, does that prohibit the use of public grant funds to purchase the property in two thousand twenty-two? My research indicates that your limitation is there must be a public purpose to be served by the use of public funds to purchase the property, and as I've set out in, in the, the report, and also, if you'll, Mike, can you, are you even here? Can you pull up that map as part of my report?
I'm trying to give you something.
If you can't, that, that's fine, but I attached to my report, I'm not sure what page it is on your agenda, but this is an aerial from the property appraisers website, and I've marked there what essentially is the, what has been the board's long-term plan to relocate Alligator Drive inland at the old K O A campsite. That relocation inland is complete with the exception of these two lots that are currently under contract now with an appraisal price of two hundred and thirty thousand. This was, I believe, and I wish Alan were here, but maybe he'll correct me if he comes back, or maybe his proxy will if they know. But I believe this was part of Mr. Pierce's plan that he had taken to the board a long time ago to relocate this road inland to get the road as far away from the open waters of the Gulf of Mexico as possible, and if you're looking at that map, these last two lots would get the leg of Alligator Drive, or I guess it's actually Tom Roberts in Hardwood Miracle, more inland and would allow the board to avoid having that hard ninety-degree right-hand turn to come off of Alligator Drive and go north to access Tom Roberts. So there's a public purpose in two parts. One is to relocate the road further inland so that you then can provide access to the several hundred houses that are to the west of the old K O A campsite, and the further public purpose, as I understand it, is these funds are going to be used for the construction of a relocated firehouse, which on that map is going to essentially be at the north end of the old K O A property, fronting and facing on Alligator Harbor. So having not located any facts or case law which indicates that, even if we make the presumption that public funds were used to purchase Lot Five, I have not found any case law that indicates that's a prohibition, and there is a public purpose which supports moving forward with the contract for the purchase and sale. So I am asking today for board action that says on my report, well, board discussion than action whether to proceed with the purchase and sale of the two lots, Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department for two hundred, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars as described in my report.
Is that the right map, Commissioner? Is that right map?
It's page twenty-five.
Is it page twenty-five?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, man. There we go.
So if you're looking at the screen, on the far left, it is the, or as I'm facing that screen, far left, I guess if you're facing that, it'll be also far left, those were the two lots in question. You can see where the road, out top, Tom Roberts is the one that's in the middle, it comes down, makes a hard left, goes down towards the Gulf of Mexico, and then you can see where it curves off to the left, that's where the road has been relocated thus far, and this purchase would allow for the continuation of that, that gentle curve going to the west and moving it further inland and away from the highly eroded condition of former Alligator Drive.
So moved.
And second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Bolt and Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And commissioners, I have a couple of information items on my report, but unless the board has any questions for me, I will not address them specifically.
Anyone have any questions for Attorney Schuler? All right, any commissioner comment?
I just got one quick, quick one, I promise, I just wanted to update people in my district on some projects that the city's doing. The City of Carabelle, as people know, are in the Lighthouse Estates area, are doing a complete sewer water, or sewer water project. The, it's eight months from being completed. If anybody has any issues with their driveways or anything, they are going to come back and redo all that. I know the road's cut up, I've taken pictures just for our record so that we can make sure that they do it right. They will come back after the project's complete and repave and redo all that, it's just going to take, they're waiting till everything's done, that way they have to go back and recut, then, and then, of course, they're trying to order all the supplies at once, instead of a lime rock load here and there, they're trying to order it all at once, so if a driveway's messed up, they are going to come back and redo it. I always advise, take pictures of it before, that way we can have pictures to compare after to make sure that they are, make sure, to make sure that they did it back the way it was supposed to be.
sure that they are, make sure, to make sure that they did it back the way it was supposed to be. If it's any emergent thing that needs to come up where they need some, some material in the driveway immediately, they can contact me directly or reach out to Courtney over at the city office and, um, ask her for that. So I just want to make a point. Everybody know that, because I know I've been getting some phone calls and emails about it. So just F Y I. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I hope they're able to, to do that and get, get it out. And I know that there's some of those roads there, and I think they did it road bores instead of cuts, where the roads themselves are kind of rippled too, so that's.
They, they've cut a lot. And, um, like I said, I've got pictures for our own records. So if they don't go back and do it the right way, I've got pictures to say, hey, no, this is the way it was before. You gotta, gotta make sure it's done right, so.
Any other Commissioner comments? Thank you, Commissioner. I think we're commented out.
Thank you.